Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Ferndale City Council meeting for Monday, January 26, 2015. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You guys were loud. Nice to see so many people here tonight. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Lennon?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Falica?
Here.
Piana?
Here.
And Mayor Coulter?
Here, thank you. We have a, we do indeed have a quorum. The next item of business would be the approval of the agenda.
I would move that you accept the agenda as presented.
No, I support that.
Moved by Martin and supported by Piana. Is there any discussion on the agenda? I guess one thing I'd like to do, because I do see our county commissioner and our new state representative in the audience, I'd like to give them a minute to just come up and introduce themselves in one case and explain what's going on at the county. So I'd like to add that as the first presentation, if that's all right. Hearing no objections. Any other discussion? Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Lennon?
President, yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Falica?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. The agenda is adopted. So moving on to presentations, as promised, Commissioner Zach, welcome.
Thank you. I just want to remind residents, for low-income residents, you can waive your tax fees. They can be due after, by April 30th, waiting for your homestead payment from the government. If you are interested in doing that, you need to contact your city first and let them know that you're doing it, and you can wait until you receive your homestead check. That's it for tonight. Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming. Good to see you. And Representative Wittenberg, welcome officially as our representative.
Good evening, everyone. Oh, thank you. Appreciate that. Hopefully, I'll get the same reaction in Lansing. Well, good evening, everyone. Again, as you said, I'm Robert Wittenberg, the newly-elected state representative for this district, so I want to thank you all. Nothing too exciting to report right now, just a couple of things to go over was assigned committees. So I'm on health and insurance, and then on the minority vice chair for financial liability reform, so exciting there. We are going to have our first coffee hours here. It's going to be, hold on, let me just confirm the date, February 26 at 7:00 p.m. at the Ferndale Library. So any of you are welcome, and anyone at home, and anyone in the audience. I'm also going to give you my email and phone number, so if there are any questions, issues, concerns, just know that I'm always accessible and always want to hear what's going on in the community. So the email is robertwittenberg@house.mi.gov, and it's Robert in Wittenberg's, W-I-T-T-E-N-B-E-R-G. And the phone number is (517) 373-0478. So that's pretty much it. I will check back in whenever I can and as things progress. Also, Barbara, who is working in Representative Kogan Lipton's office, is going to be the district director. She's going to continue as the district director. So I know she's got a great relationship with a lot of people in the community. She lives here in the community, is just wonderful, so it'll make that transition a lot easier as well. So, and then I have another person in there, Aaron Keel, who's the legislative director. He worked under Rudy Hobbs, has a lot of experience as well. So got a good team looking out for everyone in Lansing, so if there's anything we can do, if you need anything, you know, please just never hesitate to reach out to us.
Awesome.
So, questions, anything?
Thank you. Anyone have questions?
No.
No, but appreciate you stopping by.
Absolutely. Thank you, guys, for having me.
All right. Thanks. All right. Our next presentation is the Ferndale seniors' presentation to the Ferndale Elks, and I believe Jeannie Davis is here from the seniors. Do you want to come up here, or, okay?
Every year, the seniors during the ICE Festival sell cookies for a cause. The causes vary. We got in the habit of doing this when there was a contest to see who could sell the most cookies, but they discontinued the contest. So we continued doing it. Last year, we sold cookies, and we raised money and gave the money for the bedside critters, these little plush animals to put by kids' bedsites. And this year, we decided we would do it for the Elks. Everything we raised, we would give to the Elks Club for things to send to the soldiers in Afghanistan. So we, with just selling cookies, we raised $470 and gave it. And all of these, all these cookies were made by our darling ladies, so would all of the seniors please stand up? Come on, you ladies, too. Well, all you ladies and dick, okay. Did you make cookies, Dick?
Are you still alive?
Okay.
Thank you, Jeannie. Thank you so much.
On behalf of the Ferndale Elks and Hanging with the Heroes, we would like to thank you. And Joe Castimer is the chairman of Hanging with the Heroes. He's got a presentation for you.
Thank you. I have a certificate of appreciation for you. On behalf of the Ferndale Elks and the Hanging with the Heroes, I would like to thank you to all members of Ferndale Senior Group for their tireless efforts and continued support in our quest to honor our local men and women serving our country in the armed forces. It's only through the efforts of those like you that may continue our program. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
I see, Monique Herzic, that must mean Ferndale Public Library is next in presentation.
Ferndale Area District Library.
Ferndale Area District Library. That's official now, isn't it?
It's official.
Yes, it is. We'll make a note of that.
Thank you. I have a couple of announcements and a couple of invitations this evening. We just opened our Playful Minds area in the kids' section. We want to invite our pre-readers to come and play and explore. This addition is thanks to the contribution of our friends of the library, and I want to remind folks that it's $20 annually for a household membership, which supports programming like the Playful Minds play area and the upcoming Ferndale Reads. And one of the announcements that I have is that the title this year is a psychological thriller by, called Bird Box, by Ferndale author Josh Mallerman. And we're going to kick off with a Fear Factor-style event.
Oops.
Fear Factor-style event on Saturday, March 7. You can get information about that on our Facebook page at Ferndale Area District Library. We'd like to invite everyone to celebrate the installation of our long-awaited LEED award. The LEED award is for the green build-outs that we did, including the living roof and all of the other environmentally friendly additions that we made to the library. And that event is February 10 at 7:00 p.m. We're very proud of the fact that we were awarded a silver level. We'd like to invite the community to help us to celebrate that. It's Tuesday, February 10 at 7:00 p.m. And the last thing is an announcement. Usually, we get a very large selection of the paperwork that you need to file your taxes from the IRS, and this year, that will be limited to just the easy forms, 1040, 1040A, and 1040EZ. So I have some information for you on how to get more of those forms. You can go to IRS.gov for downloadable forms, or if you would like forms sent to your home, you can go to IRS.gov/OrderForms, or 1-800-829-3676 to have those mailed to your home. Thank you.
Excellent. Does anyone have any questions, Monique?
Thank you very much.
Thanks for the update. Our next presentation is the Ferndale Memorial Association's Memorial Mall Update, and Shannon, I believe you have a...
Thank you, sir. Trying to get this to work right. There we go. All right. Can the council members see that okay?
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you. I believe you have this in your briefing packets as well. Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, my name is Shannon Ruse. I am a member of the Ferndale Memorial Association. We sponsor the Veterans Day and Memorial Day observances here in our community. We also are custodians of sorts for the Ferndale Memorial Mall. So on behalf of the association, I'd like to take a moment to update the council on our efforts to renovate and renew the mall, considering the fact that it is actually city property and part of our community. So, are there any next slide here? No, how about that? There we go. So what I'd like to do is, again, try to reacquaint everyone this evening with the memorial renovation project, talk a little bit about our Phase 1 activities, then go into our fundraising efforts to date, talk a little bit about our event schedule from fiscal year '15 onward, and then take a few minutes, if we had the time, to answer any questions or any observant comments.
Great.
Thank you. All right. Again, apologize. All right, so a few years ago, we obtained permission from the council to renovate the memorial in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, make it wheelchair-accessible, et cetera. And we also, during that time, planned additional site improvements to beautify the project for future generations. So now, over the years, it kind of languished and the project lay dormant, so last summer, we basically re-energized the project with a new fundraising strategy. So the renovation project scope to date, as we planned it through our architect, is divided into two phases. Phase 1, as I've mentioned before, would be ADA compliance and then improvements to the existing structure, the renovation of things that are going obsolescent or structural infidelities in the mall. Phase 2 would be landscaping, fencing, and the beautification aspects of that. Roughly right now, we see Phase 1 going through fiscal year '15 with the hope that we would begin the actual improvements sometime around the summer of this year. And then we look more like Phase 2 as the winter abates and we go into spring of '16 looking at those beautification projects. So hopefully, if funding-dependent, we would be able to complete the entire project sometime in 2016. All right, so this is just to reacquaint everyone again with some of the actual improvements. We have mostly Phase 1 here, but we do have the landscaping, as I've pointed out before, in Phase 2. But you can see, we've got two ADA-accessible ramp structures that will be on the mall. We will assess the existing flagpole structure there and the base of that, remove existing vegetation, and basically do a lot of stripping of the area and make it more presentable for construction. One of the things I'd like to point out to the council in Phase 1, that we will look at everything as we plan, of course, in working through Department of Public Works and others, that we will not do anything to impede upon the Memorial Day or Veterans Day celebrations. So we will try to plan our activities in the confines of those two events, so we wouldn't have a construction site there when we're trying to celebrate a holiday for the veterans.
May I ask a question before I move on? You mentioned in Phase 2 fencing was part of it. Where do you foresee the fencing going?
I believe we have that in architecture. We're still on fencing. The fencing would be, if I can go back here, and I do have it in the backup slides as well, but I think the fencing would be around the major areas there where the monument is and the flagpole on that side of it, and lower. Excuse me, go ahead, please, Ms. Rolfe. I'd like to recognize Ms. Rolfe, if you don't mind, please, as the council. That's quite all right. And this would be like wrought iron fencing, so we're looking at, we're looking at more decorative fencing. I think it'd be important to emphasize, please, go ahead.
It will be a lower fencing to replace where we have those bushes, which a lot of them have been taken out, but to just protect that area, beautify it, make it more respectful, and that area as the solemn area.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. All right, so does that answer your question, sir?
Uh huh.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so right now, we have Phase 1 cost estimates. Now, when I say this, we have a total project cost of approximately $62,000 for Phase 1 and Phase 2. Phase 1, we have, the majority of our funds will be going towards the ADA-accessible compliance measures, as you see there, about $19,725. The demolition site, and these are all with the inclusion of the contingency fee for any type of inflation, because these figures are about a year and a half old. So we have about $8,927 budgeted for that, and then, of course, the repair of the structural flaws for about $6,250. So we're looking at a total Phase 1 project cost of $34,902, based on the most recent estimates, plus or minus a 15% contingency fee. All right, so right now, our fundraising efforts to date, and when I say fundraising efforts to date, very recent, so we started really fundraising in earnest back in November of last year with some individual engagements and civil outreach to some community organizations, most notably the Veterans of Foreign Wars, who donated quite a bit of sum of money to us, and at the neighborhood, about $2,000. So actually, this figure should read now $4,560. So again, when you compare this figure to our actual costs involved, we're a long way from where we need to be, but we're off to a very good start. We're about 10% of where we need to be for Phase 1. So again, as I mentioned before, we are looking at a multi-phase, multi-tiered strategy for our fundraising, civic and community outreach, both individual and collective, looking at a social media presence, which we haven't really had that much in the association before, and of course, major events and announcements at both Veterans Day and Memorial Day, and then we're looking at other civic events such as, or community events, I should say rather, such as the Dream Cruise. Okay. These are our activities today. Again, we basically kicked off this re-energized effort, as I mentioned before, around the summer of 2014. So we began our initial project planning and laying out our strategy for fundraising. Then we began our fall meeting in earnest in conjunction with our Veterans Day observance. Then we developed a couple additional strategy meetings, just focused solely on the fundraising and on the mall project. And then, of course, we had our first presentation, which was very successful, to the VFW. And we plan to reach out to other veterans organizations in the area, since the memorial actually doesn't represent not only Ferndale, but also, I believe, Pleasant Ridge and some other community areas. So as we, before, beyond today, we have planned from now until Memorial Day to have additional civic outreach events. And again, we're also looking at a fundraising site. We have not really finalized yet which site we're going to go for. We may go GoFundMe or one of those type of events, so we can try to solicit more funds. And then, of course, we'll look and try to make an announcement, hopefully try to break some ground on the project, of course, working through the proper channels with the city on or about July of this year. Okay, so that seems a bit ambitious, but we think we can get there.
Okay.
All right, so as I mentioned before, this is our media presence, our online presence. We have a website. We've revamped it. And then if you can reach us for any type of questions or comments, or a, you know, want to know how you can provide funds if you so choose, we are going to through the FerndaleMemorialAssociation@gmail.com. And I'd like to recognize my wife, if you will, Ms. Karen Ruse. She's basically our social media manager at the moment.
Excellent.
So, yeah.
Yay!
So she's actually been working very diligently to try to set up our social media presence. I went there rather quickly in the interest of time, because I know the council has quite a bit of business this evening, but I am prepared, or even my members from the association are prepared, to answer your questions.
Great. You did do that briefly, but thoroughly, I would say, and so let me ask you, does council have any questions, Shannon?
I just have one, and I didn't see it in any of the illustrations, and it may have been blocked by one of your info bubbles. But the ADA ramps and access, is there access onto the median itself? Is there going to be curb cuts, you know, coming from the main sidewalk across the street onto the island itself?
Actually, that was already, there's already been some ground broken on the curb cuts as well. We got that on? Thank you very much. Let's see. I don't think so. Can you see it right there?
From here, if you remember, mid-summer last year, there were actually new lines painted, new bike lines painted, and when that was done in the area in front of the firehouse between there and Nine Mile, some of the ramps from the other sidewalks were cut in already. It's just a matter of joining them to the actual walkways on the memorial itself. So the early parts have already been laid. Now we just need to incorporate it.
Okay, great. I just want to make sure, you know, it's great that you have access in the memorial, but I want to make sure that people get to the memorial.
Yeah. Other questions?
Well, thank you very much for your time.
All right. Thank you for the presentation. Appreciate the update, and good luck. All right, our next presentation is a presentation by the Downtown Development Authority, and that will be Dean Bach, the incoming chair.
Good evening.
Good evening, Dean.
Yes, I'm going to throw some stats at you. My name's Dean Bach. I'm on the Ferndale Downtown Development Authority Board of Directors. Some 2014, this is 2015, right?
Yes, it is.
Some stats that were handed to me is that 262 new jobs were created in Ferndale over the last year. That's a lot for a nice little city like ours. 11 new, net new businesses, 1,600 square feet of new commercial building space, and then the big number of $7.6 million in public and private reinvestment into our downtown area, and those are numbers that I got from the DDA. Those are nice for our town. Also want to take a moment and introduce our new executive committee, which is comprised of John McQuiggin as the vice chair, Jackie Smith is our treasurer, and Mindy Couples is our secretary, and I have been sworn in, I guess, at this point, as the chairperson for the DDA. So it'll be interesting two years. I'm looking forward to working with the city council and then moving forward with all the challenges that we face in Ferndale as we grow and continue to grow. And then a quick plug for the Blues Festival. It's in full swing. There's lots going on around town, lots of great music, great food, brave the cold weather. There's not a lot of snow, so there's plenty of parking spaces at this time of year. And then there's the Barbecued Rib Cook-Off, which is this coming Saturday in the parking lot of the library from noon to 6:00. All the money from the Blues Festival does support and benefit the Ferndale Youth Assistance and the Michigan AIDS Coalition, so come on out and support your local businesses and your local charities. Thank you.
Any questions of Dean?
Any questions? See you Saturday.
See you Saturday?
See you Saturday. And I would just say, you know, congratulations for you and the officers. We really do look forward to working with you on lots of challenges, including one we're going to take up later today, which is parking, which is probably right near the top of the list of challenges, but not the only challenge we face. So Dean, we look forward to working with you and the whole board on how to fix those.
Thank you.
Good deal. Thank you, Dean. All right, our next presentation is Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission, and Greg is taking off his council hat, sorta, you can't really officially do that, but putting on his Parks and Rec Advisory Commission hat, and you're going to present a report from the advisory commission.
Yes, I will. Thank you very much, Mayor. It's been exciting, it's been an exciting year for the Parks and Recreation. In March, I think Jill is getting the...
Jill is teeing up the presentation?
Sorry, I'm rushing it a little bit. She's getting the presentation ready.
Yeah, we'll give her a second to tee up her presentation.
Okay. So again, it's been an exciting year for Parks and Recreation. Back in March, we reconvene the Parks and Recreation Commission, and that is, the acronym we use is PARK. And...
Do we have a clicker for the next slide?
Oh, it's right here. And so I'd like to take a moment to introduce the members. Most, if not all, are here. Everett Kaiser, who is our chair. Everett's not here yet. Next is Wanda Corgel, our vice chair. Dunest Augustine. John Hardy is here. Justin Lyons, who I know can't be here tonight, and Robert Premu, who I saw coming in the back. These members have worked very hard over the last nine months to get the ball rolling on Parks and Recreation, and in June was the first order of business that they took on was approval of decommissioning Saratoga Park. Sounds kind of bad that a Parks and Recreation Commission comes together to get rid of a park, but it was, it was a wise decision that they made and council made. In July, they approved to remove a hockey rink at Garbutt Park for future development, and that'll be discussed a little later on in the presentation. In the fall, they approved Wilson Park as the recommended location for our new dog park, and that will be talked about further in this presentation. And in November, they prepared and prioritized a list of park improvements that will be presented to council in February. And I'm going to turn the next portion of the presentation over to Jill to talk about the highlights of the Park and Recs department.
Just a few highlights from over the past year. I'll let Lloyd touch on some of the maintenance items that his crew has been up to. Remember, this past summer, the DPW department, the Recreation Department, and Police Department all worked cooperatively to implement a park ranger program. We had a ranger on duty seven days a week, monitoring the parks, emptying trash, cleaning the restrooms, checking in on rentals. Program went very well. It was very well received. We'll be working this winter to kind of fine-tune some of the details and tweaking it to make it even better for this next season. We also installed key access control locks at Geary, Harding, and Martin Road, which allowed us to set timers, have the restrooms open and close times remotely, which also worked very, very well, streamlined our processes that we do in the Recreation Department as far as getting things open for rentals, programming, and we'll looking, we'll be looking at doing additional bathrooms this season as well. We also implemented Sunday park rentals again for the first time since 2010, and again, that went over very, very well. We got a little bit of a late start in the season, but we're looking, bringing that back again this summer as well. I hope. Let's go to Lloyd.
As council is aware, mayor and council is aware, in the last year, 18 months, DPW has been surveying the parks along with the Park and Rec Commission and the Park and Rec Director to evaluate for safety hazards, maintenance needs, and some of this information has already been presented to council, but we've corrected a number of safety issues, removed hazardous trees, and now we're at the point where we're trying to be very responsive to any graffiti or repairs that need to be made out of our normal repair maintenance line item. Further on in the presentation, I'm going to be very, I'm very happy to be able to report to council some of the exciting things that we'll be contributing to in the next five to six months.
Thanks.
Yep, you are.
I am next. As you can see, this is a slide that council has seen before. There's a specific company named and a play structure in the picture. You can see our before at Garbutt and the future, although this is just a representative example. You know, the intent is to go to a, work our bid through an organization called US Communities. It's bid nationwide, and there's two very well-known companies, Game Time and Compan, who will be competing against each other to present within budget a plan for Garbutt Park, which will be presented to the Park and Rec Commission, and there'll be some changes made, I'm sure, at that time, and then based on what they recommend, that will be coming back for council. Public Works is very thrilled to be at the point where, you know, the behind-the-scenes work and the maintenance work has been accomplished. And so in the next five months, you know, along with all the other exciting things that are going on, we're going to be installing the dog park. We're going to be improving the fall zones. We're going to be removing this aged piece of equipment. We're going to be excavating and using the dirt from that area to actually make some toddler play mounds, which will also be discussed here shortly. A low-cost fun item that the DPW will be developing based on recommendations from people on the Park and Rec Commission. And, you know, I'm very excited, I think, about the value that this type of arrangement with Park and Rec by having these two national companies that have already, you know, gone head-to-head and received a recommendation from US Communities. They're very well-known companies. I've worked with them before, and they're able to meet our tight needs, so that we'll be seeing a lot of activity. DPW is going to be concentrating heavily on parks as soon as the weather breaks. Structure will be removed. Dog park will be installed. Excaviation will begin, and once the plan is presented to council as recommended by the commission, Public Works will be there, improving the access for handicap and all people of all ability to be able to get to the place. to be able to get to the play structures, improving the crushstone path that it's already in the area, putting the mounds in. Um, and I think we'll see a lot of other things that are yet to come before council for your review.
Next on the presentation is Robert.
So, um, this year, Park provided findings to the Parks and Rec Department and DPW concerning the possibility, including natural play features at some of our playgrounds. Um, natural play features can be anything from tree stumps to be used to jump around on, to loose parts to play with, um, but they're all united by this idea of encouraging an engagement with nature, um, being based around open-ended play and having a sort of a natural aesthetic. Um, Park recommended that we start with earth mounds. Um, they're currently seeing a resurgence in popularity in the field of park design, so their inclusion into our park system sort of solidly situates the city of Ferndale at the cutting edge of landscape design. Um, ours can be constructed or formed in-house by DPW, kind of as Lloyd described, um, at a relatively low cost. We've identified uh two of our parks, Geary and Garbutt, um, to be sort of the place where we would stick these new, these new play places, um, at a low cost while beautifying them with this frankly bold aesthetic. Um, this is sort of a representation of maybe one of the more visionary um earth mounds. I don't know if we have a good idea of what ours will look like, but they'll be cool.
I was gonna ask how you cut those.
Yes, one of the...
Okay, this is just a possible example of what you could do by making mounds.
So that people can know that.
Gotcha.
Uh, the next thing that we're looking at uh later this year is the implementation, implementation of a program called Safety Town. Um, it's geared toward pre-K and K students to teach children... Oh, I'm sorry, you're here.
Would you like me to talk?
Yes, please. Uh, Everett was, is gonna give this presentation. Thanks.
Thanks. Sorry, I'm just squeaking in. Uh, yes, so Safety Town is uh designed to give children an experience on the road in a safe environment and get them used to uh kind of the rules of the road and traffic and, and those traffic ideas. Uh, it's good for kids as young as uh four or five to get them uh practicing on bicycles and uh riding a straight line and such like that, but also up through uh middle school so that they can take advantage of all the bike infrastructure in Ferndale. The uh, we have quite a few bike lanes, we're keep putting more and more in, and with uh the lack of busing at the upper school levels, it'll just enable them to get around a little bit easier.
Great, thank you.
Uh, and incidentally, uh, we are looking at, uh, there's been a large discussion of having this at Garbutt Park, uh, where we're going to remove the um hockey rink, so that concrete pad would be the foundation of, of this.
And Greg, removing that rink, that, that still leaves one rink remaining, correct?
Uh, that leaves like four, I believe, three.
At le, at least one, okay, three more rinks, okay, 'cause I know there is a men's in-line group that uses it, so...
I believe they use the one at Harding.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, and even getting rid of that particular rink, uh, because no one really uses it at that park, um, will provide additional uh materials for repair on the existing rinks.
Nice.
And now to present the dog park is Wanda Corgel.
This is gonna go over very well. Heard a lot about a dog park since I've been mayor. Excited about this, yeah.
I hope so, I hope so.
Almost as much as the pool, but that's for another presentation.
That's a long discussion. The park members are looking to establish Ferndale's first dog park to be located at Wilson Park at University in Hilton. We carefully reviewed our options and selected Wilson Park for multiple amenities it has to offer the residents, along with plenty of parking as well as restroom. Low residential surroundings were also a factor and a big plus in the, in the decision along with the Hilton Road traffic to help reduce any of the playful noises from the doggy playground. Um, it may be a simple structure in the beginning, however, please know this, it is a work in progress, and we are looking to obtain funds through contests like Bark in the Park or possible sponsorships. So hopefully, very soon, people can enjoy it and that, you know, go, go to the park more often and see what we have to offer. Thank you for your time.
And that will be available in 2015, though? Yeah?
Yes.
Lloyd is saying yes, okay.
And, and we looked at a number of parks, and, and I know for a, a while, um, Oppenheim Park was being considered as the park, and one of the objective, uh, the uh discussions about Oppenheim was that it's such a small park that if you put it, a dog park in it, it all be, all of a sudden becomes just a dog park. Um, there's no room for anything else, and so that neighborhood loses out on having a real park. Um, Wilson is big enough that you can add a dog park and still continue to offer other amenities. Um, and now looking ahead, um, was this you? You were... Sure, thanks.
Uh, the bullet points pretty much say, say it all. Um, you know, we will be certifying playground safety instructors, at least two, perhaps three. Uh, as Jill said, we're going to continue with the park ranger program. Uh, we're gonna continually expand the wireless uh key access to the various restrooms, and we're gonna continue to look for other sources of funding wherever possible by reapplying for uh some of the grants that the, the city has been close to obtaining but did not obtain, and we hope that our uh luck will, you know, prevail.
'Cause we did not, just to be clear, we did not get this, in this cycle, the grant that we were hoping for from the state as a play equipment, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Although, uh, they, we scored very high.
Mm-hmm.
Jill could answer more questions on that, 'cause she did the lion's share of work in the grant preparation, uh, but we did score very high, but not, we were not the successful uh winner. But we will, you know, we will be applying again, and, you know, we learn more as we go along, and uh hopefully we'll be able to outscore the, the next in line.
Okay, so some people, uh, that's the end of our presentation. Some people might think, you know, well, it's not really a lot, but when you take and consider that um the Parks and Rec Commission meets an hour and a half uh once a month, uh, I think that's accomplishing a lot to get to this point um in offering uh these opportunities to improve our parks. And like I said, next month, they're gonna be presenting a, a nice, nice list of uh future amenities that they would like council to consider, um, and I think you will be very, very happy with that presentation as well. So, is, are there any questions?
Any questions of Greg or anyone on the commission?
Good work, though.
Just thank you for your work, I, it seems like a nice list of stuff to me.
This is all the commission and Jill and Lloyd. I just sit at the meetings and answer questions.
Well, you do well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, uh, that concludes our presentations. We had a number of them tonight, but thanks, everybody, for sticking with us through those. Our next item of business would be our call to audience, and call to audience is the audience's opportunity to come up and address council on any issue that they would like for up to three minutes. Please keep in mind that we ask you to not address items that are on the rest of the agenda, 'cause you'll have a chance to speak to those when we get there, but if you'd like to come up, uh, give us your name and your address, and three minutes to speak on anything that you would like, not on the agenda, that would be great. And Jeannie is back.
Hi, if I could, Jeannie Davis, if I could, I'd like to wear two hats tonight. First is the senior hat, and first of all, I neglected to mention, when I talked about selling the cookies, a big thank you, she's still here, to Dean Bach. We would not be able to do this if Dean did not. But he opens the, the doors to us, fixes up a space for us, and makes us welcome, so it's great. And um, wearing the same senior hat, um, there's a lot of scams going around. Again, Tiffany put on Facebook that she got a call from the IRS supposedly today, and it was another scam. So I want to announce that on February twenty-fifth, that's a Wednesday, eleven AM at the Kulik Center, um, someone from the State Attorney General's Office is coming to talk to the seniors about phone and computer scams, and of course, the public is welcome, doesn't matter how old you are, and, and it's free. So I'll try and get back and announce it again in February. The other thing is, the artwork out here in the hall, when you leave, would you please go and look in the hall? The Art Commission had its first reception for art at City Hall at last Thursday, and thank you, Mayor, for coming, and thank you, Helene Zach, and the other people that came. It was a success, it's good. That artwork will be there for the next six weeks. I think we had, what, maybe fifty people there?
Yeah, at least.
Yeah.
At least.
And we serve munchies, so there's always a reason to come in out of the cold. But our next exhibit, there will be, and there will be a reception on this night, is March twelfth, and that will go to April twenty-third, and that will be Taurus Burns. And then on April twenty-ninth is our next exhibit and reception, and that is gonna be our own Judy Elias. So please, like I say, as you leave, go and look at the artwork in the hallway. Thank you. Joanne reminded me to tell you, the art is for sale, and a portion of, of your purchase price goes to help the Art Commission, because the Ferndale Art Commission started a year ago, and we're doing everything we can to raise funds.
Great.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to address council this evening? Good evening.
Um, my name is Ann St. Peter, I own Pinwheel Bakery on Nine Mile, and um Melanie and Mayor Coulter, I sent you pictures tonight of our dumpster behind us again, and it's getting so bad, I feel like I had to come to the city council meeting to address it. Uh, the way the dumpster is set up right now, you can't just get to it, and the doors that are supposed to lock it in on the side for removal are broken, so people are just opening them and just throwing everything in. The garbage is probably this high around the perimeter of the dumpster right now. You can't get to any of the recycling containers to recycle anything. The cardboard containers are just like overflowing eight feet tall, they're just, it's getting worse and worse and worse and worse and worse. And I know there's cameras, I don't know if they're activated, I don't know if they're in use anymore. Kind of at my wit's end, I had to drive all of our garbage to another dumpster.
I have a clarifying question, if I may. Is this the dumpster in the parking lot?
It's the, the city dumpster in the Withington parking lot.
Okay.
And the Buffalo Wild Wings uses it, all the restaurants use it, we use it, um, Inyo uses it, so there's a lot of traffic there. So, I don't really know where...
Thank you, Lloyd, you have a...
I call the DPW all the time, and they're closed, I call the police station, they can't really do anything, they'll call the DPW.
Give Lloyd a chance to address it, and, and, yeah, dumpsters are an ongoing issue in our downtown, but, um, yeah.
Also, I haven't received your images yet, but I'm interested, and so, um...
It's just one picture, I have more, if you want them, just let me know. But they're pretty, pretty bad. I don't know if she's been there today. Anyway, I just felt like I had to address it to the whole council.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Ann.
Okay, thank you.
Did you, do you wanna... Yeah.
The current problem is actually one that I haven't experienced before. The driver actually backed in the compactor, emptied it, backed it in, damaged one of the walls surrounding the compactor, placed it so close to the trash, which was actually overflowing from the weekend, which actually is not an unusual occurrence on a busy weekend in the downtown. Monday, we're used to having the sanitation officer write citations, um, and he's becoming progressively more aggressive in doing that, and it is actually, has helped out quite a bit. Um, he'll go through the trash, document who did not use the, the compactor correctly, and, and take action. Uh, so this particular case, we've been on the phone with the owner of the company. They need to get back out there, we're gonna have the damage assessed, pull that compactor completely out, clean it all up, and, and start over. So currently, yes, absolutely, there is a problem. There is an ongoing maintenance issue that we addressed, uh, we had, we do address on a regular basis. Um, you know, we try not to find people, but it's actually just got to the point, um, in order to get compliance, you know, we, we have to. And, and we do have procedure, um, I'll check with the police department, uh, but anytime those kind of conditions call, I mean, we have people on call overtime twenty-four-seven, you know, and they will come out and, and take care of the issue.
Thanks, and keep us updated, okay? Yeah, 'cause it's, I know this was a particularly busy weekend, but that's, it has been an ongoing issue. Thank you. Good evening, council.
You know, I can't come to a meeting without opening my mouth, uh, but this time it's just for a possibility, uh, when we're talking about a dog park. And I really like the idea of having a dog park. I don't have a dog anymore, but I know that many people like to utilize them. I think it would be nice if we could do one of the most creative things with a dog park that I've never seen anywhere in this area, and that is set aside to set up some agility teaching. Do some sort of permanent tunnel, uh, some sort of a jump, some sticks in the ground to teach them how to weave, and uh that would get the um owner of the dog, uh, the chance to work with the dog, and um a lot of dogs like to do that kind of stuff. The accomplishments at the end is a great reward for the dog. So if there would be space, you know, to create such a area to do uh an agility thing, um, I think that would be a great and innovative idea for the city.
Interesting idea, thank you. Uh, anyone else would like to address council this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Um, consent agenda, items that council considers routine, and we enact in one motion unless somebody on council pulls something from the consent agenda, so let me read that uh now. Item A is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held January twelfth, twenty fifteen, uh, and the special meeting held January twentieth, twenty fifteen, is submitted by the city clerk. Uh, item B is the adoption of ordinance number one-one-five-eight, amending section seven dash three-nine-seven of the city of Ferndale Code to eliminate the distance restriction concerning, concerning body decorating salons, as submitted by our city attorney. Item C is the approval of the purchase of a replacement furniture for the new command center conference room from interior environments in the amount of seven thousand three hundred and five dollars and seventy-five cents, uh, as submitted by our city manager. Item D is the approval of an employment incentive program for the police department, as stated in the attached January fifteen, twenty fifteen letter from the chief of police to the human resources director for the current hiring cycle only and to evaluate the program for possible permanent inclusion in the police department hiring process. That was submitted by the police chief. And finally, item E is the approval of the bills and payroll, as submitted by the city manager's office, subject to the review by the council finance committee. What is council's pleasure on the consent agenda this evening?
I move to accept the uh consent agenda as presented.
Support. All right, moved by Piana and supported by Martin. Is there discussion, either by council or any member of the public for that matter? All right, Martin, would you call the role on the consent agenda, please?
Council members, Martin.
Yes.
Polika.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Lennon. And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you, the consent agenda is adopted. Uh, moving on now to the regular agenda. Our first item of business would be the consideration of a special land use for Woodward Senior Living, which would be at two-four-one Pearson, and Derek Delacorte, our director of community and economic development, will introduce that item.
I'd be glad to, and I believe this is something the city council has seen in the past, uh, when it dealt with the rezoning of the property. The applicants are here tonight requesting a special land use approval to allow a senior assisted living facility in the former school portion of the Saint James Church and Parish. Um, this is a process that's been ongoing for quite some time. The applicant did appear before the city council and planning commission previously, requesting a rezoning of the property, um, to allow the use. The second part of that process was to appear before the planning commission and hold a public hearing and request a site plan approval, and also the planning commission is the recommended body on a special land use to city council. Uh, the applicant has been successful in all of those endeavors. What is here in front of you tonight is a request for the special land use. Um, as council is aware, the special land use permit uh is a discretionary approval by the city council based on a land use that may be a slightly more intense um than the, some of the others are, some of the other uses allowed in the zoning district. Um, they have gone through that process, held a public hearing, and the planning commission is recommending unanimously that city council approve the special land use. Um, I'll allow the applicant to introduce himself and talk a couple of minutes about what they're doing, and then we'll be here to answer any questions.
Very good. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, thank you very much. My name is John Marosich, I'm the architect and also one of the partners in the development. I have another partner, Chuck Sauer, in the audience here, in case there's some questions. Uh, we are... We are looking forward to this development take place very soon. We've gone through a lot of rigor, and with the help of the planning and community and economic development department, we're very thankful that we had a lot of things we had to get through, and we did get through them very well. I'm here to specifically ask, answer questions. We plan on beginning the process of the project almost immediately after today's meeting, actually, we have meetings next week, or this week, and next week. So if you have any questions?
That was gonna be one of my questions, is your timeline, so what does that mean by starting immediately? What, just kind of take us through your timeline?
Well, we have to get the architect going on the construction drawings, and he's pretty finicky about doing things like that, so he's ready to go. So we expect that we'll probably be in permit in about three months or less, and we expect the development to be open hopefully by this time next year. It's 104 senior assisted living units. Also, just to mention here, it's timely that the dog park is being closed, or you're thinking about a dog park?
Yes.
We'll be closing your current dog park now in front of the school. And I'd also like to mention too, to the planning, or the park commission, that it is the intention of the development partners to donate the current place structure to the city.
Ah.
So I know, I talked to Derek about it, and he mentioned it's subject to current safety regulations, but we want you to be aware of that. Thank you.
Are there questions of council?
Clarification question, on your application that Woodward Senior Living LLC indicates the interest as an option to purchase where the actual owners, the Archdiocese, is the Archdiocese, are you buying the property from the Archdiocese?
Yes, we are. We're currently, we're in a partnership arrangement as a land contract to purchase the school and the convent, and we have a option in the event that the church is made available to purchase that as well.
So that would go into private ownership, then?
That's correct. But we're currently a partner with the Archdiocese in the development of the project, and as long as the church stays viable and continues, we'll be in partnership with them. But if the, if the Archdiocese chooses to close the church at some point in time in the future, then we would be the first option to purchase it.
Sure, but just to clarify, and Derek, maybe you can answer this, we don't collect taxes on the church today, correct?
Not on the church portion of the church, correct.
So we would start collecting them on the school, or do we, today?
That is my understanding, but ultimately, that would be up to the Oakland County assessor who acts as our assessing department. But yes, that is my understanding, that the portions converted to private use for profit, or whether it's a nonprofit, would be taxable, and I would defer to them for more details.
Thank you.
Although you're affiliated with St. James, obviously, is there any restrictions on who could live there?
No, no restrictions whatsoever, this is a very open development.
And I know we discussed this when you were here previously, but the intensity of the assisted living, I mean, are we talking about full nursing home care, or?
A nursing home requires a CON, it's a licensed facility, this is assisted living facility that's nonlicensed. There's not going to be any medical care per se, although the residents will be receiving medical care, there's not going to be any on presence medical facilities.
So you'll have a clinic in the building? Is that what you mean?
No, we're not going to have a clinic in the building.
I'm looking at the fire chief, I hadn't thought of this question until just now, but theoretically anyway, and maybe practically, there'll be an increase in the, in the use of our services for ambulatory care. Any concerns about our capacity to handle that?
No, sir.
All right. Other questions?
Mostly just praise. I'm really excited about this project starting, and I'm glad we're at this point through the city's regulations, and thank you for working with us as we change our zoning. I just think this is totally needed in our community of having a place to continue to age in Ferndale when you no longer want a single family home with stairs and a backyard. And I think we are long overdue for this type of housing for our seniors and our community. So thank you for being, I think, one of the first?
Yeah.
Or second?
Yeah, Hilton Road has a assisted living, but that's the more care, heavier on the care provision than this, this will be closer to senior assisted, but yeah, especially in the downtown in the last few years, first conversion we've seen.
And I have to give praise too, you first came in front of the commission in September, I believe? So we're less than six, less than six months, and you're already at this, this point in the project, I think it's fantastic.
We have a very enthusiastic group.
I guess.
And we've been working behind the scenes, waiting, you know, in parallel process to your process of review, and so we have, our investors are lined up, and there's all, the enthusiasm in the Archdiocese as well, as well as the parish itself, is to facilitate a renewed development there where it has been, I think it's been vacant for almost five years, and we're going to be doing some significant landscaping improvements and accessibility, and I believe that's going to be just a visual amenity to the city.
Agreed, thank you. All right, any other comments? All right, if not, Marney, would you call the role, please?
We have to make a motion.
Oh, that would.
I'm moving the matter of 238 and 241 Pearson Road Woodward Senior Living LLC, Sidwell numbers 2534-176-059 and 2534-176-056. The city council approved the special land use permit with the following findings and subject to the following conditions, as noted in the council packet.
Support.
Martin and Pollocka are in a close decision. Any further discussion? Anyone in the audience have a discussion on this item? All right, Marney, now would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Spallocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you, that item is adopted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item of business would be another consideration of a special land use for the hospital retail solutions for a medical marijuana facility at 2625 Hilton. And Derek, you're also introducing that item.
I am as well, your honor. The applicant is here requesting a special land use, very similar process to the one that was just detailed for the senior assisted living, for a location at 2625 Hilton Road, which is north of Nine Mile on the west side of Hilton Road. The applicant is requesting a special land use approval for the development of a medical marijuana facility in conformance with the city's ordinance related to such facilities. I have the applicants here to walk you through their business operations. They've been in front of the planning commission, again, a public hearing was held on the use, the planning commission did review it, and did unanimously recommend approval of the conditional land use. They did ask, I believe, that the site plan come back for some minor details for administrative approval, but other than that, they did recommend approval of the special land use. The applicant has met on several occasions with both the staff here, the police chief, and the city attorney, who are all here as well to answer any questions, and with that, I will allow the applicant to come up and introduce themselves and walk you through what their proposal is.
Please do.
Hello, my name is attorney Thomas Levine, I represent Mr. Dennis Zoma here, the proprietor of Hospital Retail Solutions. And the law firm of Cannabis Counsel, we have five attorneys, will be providing guidance to Hospital Retail Solutions along the way, and to ensure compliance with, with the local ordinance and, and any concerns as they arise. We will be, of course, strictly within the bounds of the law in terms of the sales, and if you have any questions, please.
Well, talk a little bit about your operations, how you see it working, what you'll be doing there.
Okay, this will provide a safe meeting place for caregivers to sell only to their connected patients, and these are designated caregivers. So it will be strictly within those boundaries, because that's the current state of what's permitted under the case law. And so the idea is that this is a secure and safe and clean place. Sometimes patients don't want this transaction to occur at their home, for example, and same with the caregivers, so it provides the privacy and security for this legal sale to occur, and for patients to gain this safe access through their connected patients, connected caregivers only.
Questions of council?
I think it's very similar to the last clinic that came to council, and I can't remember when that was.
When on East Nine Mile?
Six months ago.
Six months ago.
June, July.
Derek, same model of, as the East Nine project?
Yes, same, similar business model, larger space, similar number of caregivers. The previous one was located at 1915 East Nine Mile, which is on the north side, former party store. Yeah, similar business model, similar operational plan, this is not a dispensary, I should point out, or I mean a grow operation, there's no growing at the facility associated with the, with the, with the proposed request, but other than that, yes, very similar to the previous model of yours.
May I ask, if you don't grow it there, are you going to store it there overnight?
No, sir.
So by the end of the day, there'll be no product left in the building?
Exactly.
And they also have to have locked boxes when it's in the facility?
Correct.
So.
Where do you take it?
I'm sorry?
Where do you take it at night?
The caregiver brings a specific amount to his patient at that time.
So they just literally make that transaction, and nothing stays there later, nothing gets left? All right, thanks.
Serious?
I was not asking for myself.
I would like to point out as well, subsequent to the planning commission meeting, the applicants have met on at least one additional occasion with the chief of police to provide a more detailed security plan, which they've provided willingly, and the chief is currently reviewing and, for any additional information he might want.
Chief, do you want to just come forward, it's always good to make sure from your perspective that they've met the requirements?
I have one question prior, over here.
Sure.
Has the facility on East Nine Mile opened yet?
No, not yet.
Okay, so we don't know if the security and safety plans put in place are actually effective?
Correct.
And detering any issues that may be concern to our police department.
Correct, they have not opened yet, they have pulled building apartments, I believe they're close to finishing their interior build at this point.
It's my understanding that each caregiver that works out of this facility can only have three clients, is that correct?
Five.
Oh, it's five, okay.
Three caregivers, five.
Three caregivers?
Three caregivers, five clients.
Is that correct?
Three caregivers, five patients per caregiver.
Thank you.
Which is, and I'm looking at Derek, but maybe you know this, chief, also, is that the same number on East Nine Mile? That number of fifteen?
The proposal is up to four, in the material, up to four caregivers.
Up to four caregivers.
The prior, the prior special land use that council considered was not more than three caregivers.
Was three.
Okay.
Why?
The applicant noted two to four caregivers in his application.
So that, and that is, that's correct, that's in the application, however, I do believe they agreed to three at the planning commission meeting, and the applicant agrees to that, so it is going to be limited to three without a revised application.
Yeah, that, I, I knew there was a question about it, I couldn't find it in my, my notes here, but that's why I asked.
I guess I have a question for our, our chief and our legal counsel, is that when we were approving the one on East Nine Mile, there was pending state legislation that could have changed, that would have impacted existing facilities, and I wonder if that transpired, changed, or something else in the way?
That did not, it was, it was voted, it was not voted upon in the last day of the session, so the state legislature will have to start from scratch. So both of those bills have, didn't get out, didn't get voted upon or get on the governor's desk. So there are no, those were called provisioning centers, those are, that's, that may, again, be on the horizon, but at this point in time, we are under the current legislation, the MMMMA, as well as the city ordinance that governs us, as well as the state law that, or case law that has developed since the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act was, had come about, it was passed by the voters.
Sure. We'd like to add as well, and I'd ask Dan to opine if he agrees, but, and the way we've set these approvals up, both for 1915 East Nine Mile and this approval is, even if that legislation changes, their operational model, their business model, the limit to three caregivers, is approved as part of this process, as a condition of this process. So even if that legislation changes, allowing a different operational model than currently, they would have to come back to the planning commission and city council for revised approvals.
Let me just put a caveat on that, as, it depends on what the state law says, but that's certainly the intent and the understanding of the applicants thus far under the previous draft of the legislation that didn't get passed, so it would depend on what the state law said, should there be new legislation in the future.
So now having said that, chief, do you want to just opine, as Derek would say, on this operation from your current law enforcement perspective?
We have met with, I mean, a lot of this is, is the unknown, how, we are, a small amount of caregivers, means a relatively small amount of patients, the caregivers themselves have to actually have five patients, so the number could be no greater than fifteen, so, but that doesn't necessarily mean that each caregiver has five patients. Our concern will be, is the management of, of our, our role as administrators of this, we will have to, the police department will be the, will be charged with checking to see that they're following the rules, checking to see that the transactions are going appropriately. As I stated at the planning commission meeting, we believe that under the current staffing levels of the police department, one is something, one of them, which we have one of them, we can handle two of them, it's going to start impacting on, this is a brand new thing, so this is a brand new role that the office, that the detectives probably will have to have, so as we go forward, the more of these that are approved, both by the planning commission and by the city council, will mean that our detectives will be taxed with, it's very similar to the liquor control function that one of our detectives have, the difference is, is that the state rebates that money back to us to pay for a good portion of detective salary. In this particular scenario, we'll be taking on more responsibility as more of these come about, and that would be taken away from other roles that the detectives will be doing. So I've met with Mr. Zoma, I know, I know Dennis as a business owner, we did go over his security plan, he, you know, I made suggestions, he, you know, we, so, Mr., I have no problem with Mr. Zoma, but I'm just saying is that as we move forward, this will be, it will impact on the police department's role and responsibility and, and manpower that needs.
Derek, that reminds me of another question, which is, I, I thought I heard at one point we had up to like three of these in the pipeline, I don't know where the other ones went, maybe you could talk a little bit about that, and then what you foresee as the saturation of the, of the city's ability to handle these?
Absolutely. At the same time this one was reviewed by the planning commission, we did have two other applications on the agenda that night, where the public hearings were held. In both of those instances, the planning commission indicated rather strongly to the applicants that they did not feel they had met the bar or cleared the hurdle for a recommendation for approval, and gave those applicants the opportunity to withdraw their requests and supplement their submittals at a later date. Both of those applicants took that opportunity. I don't know if they will continue to come forward. We did see a rather large spike in applications based on that new legislation that was pending. Since that legislation has not been passed, and I do believe what the chief said is correct, that it would have to start over from scratch, we don't know. That legislation did allow a, I will say, a broader variety of facilities, and we did see tremendous increase in that. If the legislation passes similar to that again, we would anticipate the same type of interest in the community going forward.
Just to, to add to that, the planning commission, if, if their applications were going to be supplemented, those two applicants had up to ninety days to do it from the December 17th date, so it would be coming back to the planning commission prior to March 17th.
Without getting into the specifics of those two cases, was there a general theme of where their applications were deficient, or what we were looking for that they didn't provide?
Site plan issues related to both capacity of the site and parking lighting, operational issues with the exterior of the site, the business model and the security plan were probably the three common elements between both of them being withdrawn.
Other questions, comments?
A question. This is a really large building. If I'm looking at the right building, it's a two-story building? What else is going to be used in that space? I'm assuming nothing else really can be used, given the nature of the business. So is it just going to remain empty, or is there future growth plan?
No, sir. As of right now, there's no plans on using any part of the other property. I know they had a car dealership that was using a big chunk of the property, and they've moved on since. But there's no plans as of right now. And should be clear, the, the whole building at 2625 is not being leased by the applicant. Approximately half is being leased. The other half is currently occupied by Subaru Service. And that, we expect that other half of the building to be put back up for lease, once they consolidate their operation.
Okay.
Other questions or comments of council or the public, for that matter? Good evening.
Good evening, council. Todd Blankenship, 406 East Saratoga. They seem to be drawing a distinction between whether this is a dispensary or not. They said it is not. I'm, I'm not clear what that distinction means, and I'm wondering if there will be consumption of the product on the premises? And?
Our former cop said no.
Okay, okay. And then I guess my, the follow-up question, if it's not going to be consumed there? I don't, I don't need details tonight, but I'd certainly like to know that the citizens leaving the premises, that there is be adequate safety for them, so.
So in terms of who wants to address a dispensary versus what we're doing here, which is a very important distinction. This is not a dispensary.
Dispensary, which under the current case law are, after the reading of the statute, are completely prohibited by law. That is, the appellate court has determined that, that patient-to-patient transfers and dispensaries are not allowed. What this is, is basically is providing a safe haven for a caregiver operating under the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act to dispense marijuana to their five patients, period. So basically, this operation is operating as a safe haven, renting space to a caregiver who will provide medical marijuana, just like they would if they were, the transfers were taking place in the home of the patient or the caregiver. This is just a commercial building where that transfer is taking place. A dispensary would be someone that is a caregiver that is distributing medical marijuana to any patient, regardless of the connection that is required under the current legislation.
So to be clear, someone couldn't walk in off the street, even with a medical marijuana card, and buy marijuana at this establishment, unless they were already a pre-registered client of the?
The transfer has to occur between the patient and his registered caregiver. So the caregiver cannot pick and choose who his patients are. The patient picks and chooses who his sole only caregiver is. So he can't have more than one. He gives up his right to possess certain things and grow marijuana, medical marijuana, once he has established a caregiver relationship, and that caregiver is directly connected to that patient and vice versa.
And yes, use is strictly prohibited at the facility. Other questions? Sure, sir, come on up.
Honorable members of council, my name is Jim Manna. I'm the selling broker for the property that Mr. Zoma leased. I'm also commissioner for West Moonville Township, and I'm privy to information with the state legislature. One of the authors of the legislation, Senator Cowell from the Commerce area, just want to give you an update on that. He is planning on bringing this back up to the new legislature that's up in Lansing now. It did pass the House originally, and it did go, it did not go to a vote to the Senate on the last day that they were in session. So, but he is planning, and my feelings are, my personal opinion is, it'll eventually pass the state. Now, whether or not there's going to be any changes to it, I'm not sure, but, and I, and one more thing, just to clarify, in case you're wondering why such a large-size space, is when we went to lease this space, first of all, the rate was fantastic. The space had been vacant for many, many years. And so we didn't have the option of splitting it off. But we, it also gave us the opportunity that, since Mr. Zoma was making such a large investment in bettering the, the entire building and, and the area, that his goal was eventually that, once the state passes this legislation, he would just fit into where he's at now with the space. So it would work out perfectly, and that's, we're hoping that's the goal eventually. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else?
A motion would be in order?
I move in the matter of 2625 Hilton Road Hospital Retail Solutions LLC, that city council approves the special land use permit based on plans dated September 19, 2014, with the following findings and subject to the following conditions as noted.
With support.
By Piana, afforded by Lennon. Any final comments, questions?
Kind of a question. When did marijuana get an H in it? I always said it was a J.
I don't know that's the? Spelling in our ordinance, so we use that one. Apparently, there's more than one acceptable spelling.
Okay.
All right.
The state act used the H.
Did they really? Okay.
I do recommend that the community development office look at what would a saturation point be, particularly given any change in law where it goes from dispensary to, no, sorry, clinic to dispensary, and what that would mean for, for Ferndale. Considering that we had four applicants anticipating law, state law changes, I expect that that will happen again.
I, I think we need to do that sooner rather than later. I was going to bring up the same point. Because I don't want somebody, I don't want the pipeline clogged up with a bunch of these, and we decide two is the right number, or four is the right number, or whatever it is.
Yeah.
So really, business owners can, just know what to expect, so.
I agree, and, and you probably meant this, but I would include the police chief as part of that discussion.
Of course, yes.
Derek and the city manager, but it would be nice to have a recommendation, even a range, because ultimately, it's a policy decision of council, but it would be helpful for your council on that, so, agreed. All right, Marty, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Polka?
Yes.
And Mayor Holder.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Good luck, sir. Yes. All right, next item of business would be the consideration of a parking survey report. And I think Joe is going to introduce that item as soon as he changes the, well, changes the presentation on the computer. There it is. Double duty, thanks, Joe. Triple duty, really, but, thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you for your patience. Yes, I will be introducing this item this evening. During the last several months of 2014, the city office has commissioned an analysis of the existing parking supply and demand that's experienced in our existing parking system. The analysis is going to be presented tonight by Carl Walker, parking consultants, who is an engineering and parking consulting firm that specializes in the parking studies, parking planning, design, and everything parking. The analysis that they'll be presenting is based upon actual parking traffic studies. It was conducted by the city's parking management company, Republic Parking System. The source data being presented tonight is based upon the actual experienced observations that they documented and presented to Carl Walker. See, these are actual traffic counts that they took themselves during the study periods. This is the first study that's based on actual experiential field observation since 2006. I will let the members of Carl Walker and Republic Parking answer any questions about methodology and conclusions the council may have. I do want to clarify that the purpose of these studies before we begin were twofold. The first point, and you'll see in the first part of the presentation, was to help the city evaluate and understand the amount of typical parking traffic during the week and on weekends, and the impact of this traffic, the traffic demand on the city's current parking supply, representing both by the metered on-street parking and the city's off-street surface parking lots, so municipal metered parking only. Number two, the purpose would be to help the city evaluate whether the parking supply that has been included in the 360 development project proposal would meet both our existing demand and the future demand that would be generated by that proposed project. And with that, I would let Art Low from Republic Parking System introduce his associates from Carl Walker.
My name's Art Low. I'm the district manager for Republic Parking. From Carl Walker, I have Bill Cernah. He, Bill really did the legwork behind this. He's right behind me. And with him is Mike Ortlieb, who's a principal with Carl Walker. Basically, just to highlight what Joe Gauscha talked about, was we wanted to get a demand utilization study done to actually know what the system was doing firsthand. It's, it's a combination, if you will, from anecdotal to empirical. We're actually doing car counts. Our employees, Republic employees, went out into the field and physically counted cars in spots through a predetermined time. And then we submitted that information to Carl Walker, and Bill put that into several different established matrices that he uses on his, with regards to his specialty, which is more, you know, the urban's use relative to parking demand, needs for retail, things of all nature related to that. So I'm going to let Bill take off from here and talk a little bit, and then as we go along, I'll interject a few things too.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Which way is forward? Left arrow?
The right arrow.
Joe gave the two purposes, and here I summarize, one of the ones is determine the proposed, if the proposed parking structures are going to be able to accommodate the anticipated demand from the 360 development and combined with the existing demand levels. Study area we looked at is outlined in yellow. Running down Nine Mile and down the middle of Woodward are two red lines. We split the downtown to two, essentially two separate downtowns in response to the fact that Woodward really forms a psychological border. It may not be distance-wise, but it's certainly a psychological border, where if you're headed for a destination on the west side, you're not likely to choose a place to park on the east side. That's not to say some people won't cross, but the majority of people would prefer to stay on one side or the other. The red numbers indicate some on-street zones where we counted the vehicles parked in the on-street spaces separately by zone. The next slide shows, just to remind everybody what the municipal lots are. The lots one through eight, without five, is on the west side. And the lot, the bigger numbered lots nine through 15 are on the east side of Woodward.
Bill, if you could hold that up there, I just wanted to point out, the two developments for the public audience to take into consideration, Lot three would be representing the Wellington proposed development. And Lot six would be representing the location for the proposed Troy development in the 360 project.
Both on the west side.
Just to clarify, both on the west side of Woodward.
Thank you. The occupancy surveys that Art talked about, that his folks did, they were hourly counts from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. for the municipal and the on-street metered spaces. And they ran from October 28th through November 8th. And then there were seven weekdays in there, Monday through Thursdays, and four weekend days, Fridays and Saturdays.
If, if I could just ask, is October to November representative of what would happen at other times of the year? I mean, it seems like maybe summer would be busier, or, or, I mean?
That was a tool or a timeframe that we decided, just simply because of the way the project was moving along. You know, ideally, in the real world, you'd love to maybe be able to do a two-week count every month of each year. That's just not practical. I know in my business, very often, you get a piece of paper with an over all dollar amount, and you have to figure out a performer from that and utilization. I think it was, I wouldn't say it was arbitrary, but it was a timeframe that we picked that we felt it was good. And I think if anything, it gave us a two-week cycle, a week-to-week basis to start, and as a benchmark. And certainly, you know, as this progresses, we could do it again, if that's the inclination of, of council and city administration. But I think it does give us a good benchmark as far as time.
I have a follow-up question. The intro paragraph for this whole item on the agenda says that the city requested multiple traffic studies between July and November 2014 to ensure due diligence. And what we're being presented tonight is an occupancy survey, which was from October 28th through November 8th. So where is the July to October stuff?
I can provide a response to that. The city did have two studies that were just done on the west side. We focused narrowly on the specific impact area, focusing too narrowly, we thought, on just the 360 proposed area. We wanted to understand the actual system in its entirety. So in October, we had them go back and do additional car counts to ensure due diligence. That more full representation is being presented tonight, and that is, it took into account the extension to 2:00 a.m. We did a full week, a full two-weekend study. And we do have data from the other, just general data from the other two findings, but not in a report fashion.
This data is far more extensive than the stuff that was collected in July or August.
Okay, I have one more follow-up question. With, just through the hourly counts from 10:00 a.m. through 2:00 a.m., with our meters ending at 9:00 p.m., how were the extra hours accounted for if we weren't collecting information from the actual meters themselves?
You'll actually be, well, we had people on there actually doing experiential observations of the traffic counts after 9:00 p.m. But, and you'll see again in his analysis that he's about to present, there's significant demand or activity occurring in both on-street and off-street metered spots after 9:00 p.m. after the parking enforcement ends.
The meters themselves weren't used to collect the data. Art had people walking, driving around, one, two, three, four, five cars.
We did approve the use of additional Republic Parking Systems staff to support this project, to make sure that we were diligent in our efforts.
May I ask, I'm sorry, a question just there to clarify scope, and it goes back to your other slide of what the footprint of the study was. How did you accommodate for overflow parking in the neighborhoods, or is that not at all within your study?
We did not address that, and we understand that it, that it may be a concern, because there is some talk of some sort of a residential parking permit program. But this does not address those, those, those interlopers, if you will, that are parked in the neighborhood now that, that might be forced into the municipal.
So all the counts are exclusive of Troy, Saratoga?
For the purposes of this study, we wanted to have their focus remain counting on systems that we do control and traffic that we can identify. The residential, as we discussed with consultants, the residential areas, while we do recognize there's a significant population, downtown population, that does park there and is active there, it's hard to discern which traffic is visiting, which traffic is business employees, and which traffic belongs to the actual residents themselves. So again, for the purposes of this, we wanted to have our attention focused on the variables that we could control and that we could identify.
And let me back up a little bit, because there was a little bit of concern based on the time of the year we did the counts. We oftentimes take those counts and then have to factor them up or down, depending on some other data. If there's some other data that tells us that no, actually July is, is, is busier than November, December, October, November, we can factor up or factor down according to whatever you want your design day to be. However, do note that later, and later on, I'll talk about the Urban Land Institute Park, Shared Parking Demand Model. That model predicts a peak in December, because we've got, the 360 development's got retail in it, and retail generally, that, that demand peaks in December. Anyway, let me keep going here.
Yes.
The summary for east of Woodward is presented in this slide. Things to note is the, for the weekdays, that's the top part of the chart, on weekdays, the average occupancy of both, the combination of the on-street and the off-street lots, the average occupancy was only 40% occupied. The peak occupancy, Monday through, Monday through Thursdays, The peak occupancy, Monday through Thursdays, again, was 54%, so a little less than half occupied. The bottom half of the chart shows the average of the four, the two Fridays and the two Saturdays, and not surprising, the average occupancy jumps up to 52% occupied, where the peak jumps up to 71% occupied. Also, remember the yellow squares here, and there's three of them, and what that is highlighting is occupancies greater than the effective supply, and I'll get there and tell you what effective sup, well, I'll do it right here. Effective supply is, we almost always use that when doing supply-demand studies, and it's a percentage, we reduce the supply, the actual supply down to the effective supply by anywhere from 10 to 15%, and that allows us to plan in an operating cushion of spaces. So that it accounts for things like, there might be a pile of gravel sitting in one of the, in the corners, and you've lost a space or two, you know, that minor construction, it accounts for the dynamics of cars parking in and out. You may not be able to actually, there might be an empty spot, but you can't get into it, because somebody's backing out, and there's people behind you, and you gotta go around, and to reduce the search time for those last few available spaces. It's really not intended for a variation in demand based on season or something else. It's really just that operating cushion. If the demand's gonna vary, I'd rather put the variable on the demand than keep the supply constant. And also note that it's really okay to cross that effective supply threshold of 85%, 90%. Occasionally, at your peak period, you just don't wanna be crossing it consistently day in and day out.
Bill, could you take time just to identify, or give them an idea of what the timeframe is for the peak occupancy, or will your analysis show?
Yeah, I've got some, I'll show you these.
I might be jumping the shark a little bit for you, so.
You are a bit, but it's just that in the next slide. Here's a chart. This is east of Woodward for the weekdays, Monday through Thursdays, and it shows the green squiggly lines at the bottom is the on-street occupancy, the blue is the off-street, and the red is the combination of the two added together. And this shows, in almost all of those days, there's, this, again, east of Woodward, there's a, the strongest peak is usually in the evening, and then there's another peak lunchtime. And then you'll notice up at the top, that dashed red line is the actual capacity, and the bold black line, dashed line, is the effective supply. So as you can see here, you're below that effective supply threshold, if you will, easily throughout all of the survey days.
Can you have an identify about how many spaces below?
Um, the effective supply up there is about 360, and that peak for that third day in is about, right at about 299 or 300 spaces. Okay, so you're, you know, you gotta, right now, you've got a cushion of 60 just to that effective supply factor, and then you've got another, what is that, 120, up to the actual supply. So bottom line is, weekdays, Monday through Thursday, looks like there's enough spaces east of Woodward.
Except maybe Lot 13, which is, let's see, that's the one behind Como's, maybe, you had that one in yellow, so that says it. Maybe for a little while, just from, on Friday and Saturday, if you go back, see the 94% up there?
Yeah, a couple times.
So a couple times that lot.
Exactly. But this does, this, the other chart, this, looks at the entire area.
Okay.
And that's also focusing on the weekdays. He hasn't quite read it at the weekend.
Right, 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 okay.
I want to add this real quickly. You know, typically...
And speaking to the mic, just 'cause everybody wants to hear you.
I'll kind of make it a little more simplified from my perspective, because I'm pretty simple. A lot of you know that. But the point that you look at is, there's a lot of discussion, there's a lot of variables as far as what is actually, when are you actually full? And I think it ties into what we're talking about, and I'm gonna use Ann Arbor, that's a client of ours currently. Typically, our, the parking system there, the off-street, is running about 85% occupied. Most urban planners on the parking side will say that that's very much close to full occupancy. That could be as low as 72%, 75%, as high as 90%. That's a benchmark that we utilize there, so it really does give us a good indication as far as what we have and what we don't have. Now, again, we go a little bit in further depth, and as it relates to Ferndale, Ferndale has those peak times between a certain window, 4 to 9 o'clock at night. Now granted, there's a lot of other variables, we're not doing enforcement after 9 o'clock, so if that was to ever occur, that might change, but the point is, you have a window, and that window tends to be that 4:30, 5:30 to 8, it's the dinner crowd. You see some turnover, you see a bar crowd coming in, but that also very often tends to be three days a week, as Bill was alluding to. I think, the reason I'm putting this in here, I think it really gives perspective as to what Bill is talking about here relative to this. So this is something that we see typically, as an example, I know Ann Arbor, size-wise, it's apples to bowling balls as far as a comparison, but the analogy is still applicable in that context.
Okay.
So if I may, so this is reflective, though, of really just one bifurcation, west versus east, correct? So really, what you're looking at is the total number of spaces on the west side of Woodward. So what it wouldn't necessarily account for, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that if I'm trying to get downtown in those spots that are open or up at West Breckenridge. So the experiential piece of it is not necessarily accounted for, correct?
Yes. It's the, it's just the number of the spaces.
It's a straight number.
In that whole area.
Yeah, alright, thanks.
I think I'd like to remind everyone, we haven't quite gotten to west side.
Right, we're still on the east side.
We're still on the weekdays.
I'm just using as an example, I'm sorry.
No, no problem.
You're absolutely right.
Just to clarify.
This chart shows the occupancy east of Woodward on Fridays and Saturdays. Obviously, the supply stays the same, however, in, on the 7th of November here, the peak total occupancy did exceed that 85% threshold, but it was still, obviously, below the full actual supply. The peak there is at about 400 spaces or so. And we jump over west of Woodward. West of Woodward, I guess, no, I wasn't surprised at it. The total average occupancy for the seven survey days is 38% full, whereas the average was, or rather, the peak was 64%, jumping down to the bottom of the chart, the average occupancy overall was 65%, and the peak occupancy, total occupancy of the entire study area, was 86%. But do note the difference here, remember there was three, three yellow boxes on east of Woodward? West of Woodward, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven of them. So seven of the lots had occupancies above that effective supply threshold.
And interestingly, during the week, that 96 to one lot that exceeded it during the week is not Whittington or Troy, right?
Yeah, it was Lot 8.
That's Lot 8 behind the light, behind the post office.
Yeah, it's a pretty small lot, too.
It is.
You know, 40, was it 39, 40 spaces? So it's a pretty small lot, where Whittington, the peak for, during the week, was only 64%. This just graphs that out, that same data out, showing the overall, the overall peaks again, the red line, the red mountains going up, it clearly peaks in, you know, 7 o'clock in the evening or so. Fridays and Saturdays, again, the west of Woodward, the total occupancy starts bumping up against that effective supply factor, and exceeds it by a few little spaces for a couple of hours on Fridays and Saturday nights. So we've established that that's, we're calling that the existing demand. For the future demand, we calculated the demand for the proposed 360 development. We took the data that we had on the existing vacant commercial space west of Woodward, and we assumed that that would be filled to 90% of capacity, because there's always gonna be a vacant storefront here and there. So we filled it to 90%, whether it was retail or a restaurant, and we added that into the, to the existing demand, which we're equating through the survey documents that we, that Art's folks counted, not adjusted for any other time of year, but we can make that adjustment if it's deemed appropriate. Then we plugged in the land use data for the 360 development and the existing commercial, vacant commercial space into the shared parking demand model that we use that's based on the model developed by the Urban Land Institute. And that model takes base demand ratios and number of spaces per square foot, and then modifies those. You can adjust the driving ratio for a local community, because the driving ratio is gonna be different. For downtown Manhattan, New York, the driving ratio's a lot lower than it is here in Ferndale. So you can adjust that, that driving ratio for local conditions. It also allows you to adjust for captive market. If there's a restaurant in, on the ground floor of an office building at lunchtime, there's a good chance that a good portion of those people that are eating in that restaurant are actually, they're working upstairs and they're just coming down for lunch. So they don't, they're not necessarily creating another automobile trip to the development. So it allows you to adjust for that. There's also adjustments for the time of day, because parking demand varies by time of day depending on the land use, day of the week, that's also different, and for also monthly variations.
So you notice there's just an opportunity to take a look at the scale of this. This does represent data throughout, we had talked about other months of the year. This does represent data throughout the months.
Yeah, where, you know, it allows you to look at the weekday demand for every month, and then there's another extra line for late December, because that's a little bit different too. This model predicts the peak demand on a weekday in December at about 800 spaces.
800.
And again, you want to point out the peak hour of accumulation, too?
Yeah, the peak hour, does this work up there? Yeah. The peak hours for both November and December on weekdays is at 2:00 p.m., and that's because the 360 development has that, all that office space in there is a large part of its component, and those people are there during the day, and then they start to go home at 5 o'clock, like most offices. And we'll reinforce that here in a little bit. This slide shows a graph of that shared demand, with that peak up there at 800 spaces, again, occurring at about 2:00 p.m., right? And then, one thing to note here, is this double humped line, that's the office component of it. As you can see, it drops off dramatically at 5 o'clock after people go home. Drops off a little bit around lunchtime, because some people go out for lunch, and take their car and go elsewhere. This next slide, we developed this slide to demonstrate that the peak, the peak shifts from evening to afternoons when the 360 development is added into the equation. The green or bottom line is the existing occupancy graphed out, and this green vertical line here corresponds with the peak, and it's at 7:00 p.m. However, when you, the blue line, the next line up, is that added future demand from the shared demand model, and that peak is at 2:00 p.m. When you add the two together, we get, we get an overall peak for the lunchtime kind of crowd at 1 o'clock, and then another secondary, but lesser, peak in the evening. But as you, you know, the important takeaway here is that the demand from the 360 to development really starts to tail off, corresponding to your existing peak, because it's, your existing peak is largely bar/restaurant demand, where the office demand is gonna be going downwards at that time. This graph combines the existing, the three existing demand levels at the bottom with the, with that added demand, the 360 and the vacant spaces, and plots it out in the orange, or yellow. The peak in there is at about 1,169 spaces, adding in the number of spaces that are being proposed within the 360 development. The actual supply is about 1,459 spaces, backing off of there at about 1,300 spaces for your effective supply. And this similarly shows the same sort of graph, except for the four weekend, week four, Friday and Saturday survey periods, adding in the expected added demand. And again, it's well below the effective supply, and certainly the actual supply of all the spaces west of Woodward. This just calculates how the proposed development is, you're gonna be building on existing surface lots, so your net gain of spaces, you're gonna start out building 1,000 spaces, but you're only gonna net about 600 spaces added to the parking system. Adding that to the future supply comes up with that 1,459 number. That's just the supply.
And again, that's just to clarify and emphasize, that's just the supply west of Woodward. We're not, for the public that's viewing.
The future adequacy, and adequacy is defined as the ability of a parking supply to meet the expected demand. So we take the future effective supply, that 1,459 number, apply those effective supply factors, and we come up with 1,000, about 1,304 spaces. We subtract out that projected demand of 1,169 spaces, since, again, for weekdays, we wind up with a surplus of about 135. Now, that 135 is against the effective supply, so there's really another 155 spaces in that effective supply cushion, that operating cushion, on top of that. The future weekend adequacy, same number of spaces, demand's a little bit higher at 1,238 spaces, but it's still an adequacy, a surplus of about 66 spaces. And in summary...
Ta-da.
Woodward Avenue really creates two separate downtowns as far as parking's concerned. The demand generated by the proposed development, 360 developments, is expected to peak in the afternoons versus the evenings, and the supply, the proposed supply with the added spaces will accommodate the demand generated by that development as well as the existing demand.
Thank you, Bill. Does council have any questions for Bill or Art?
I appreciate someone who could be so passionate and enthusiastic about a very dry subject, but it, but also very thorough, and so I appreciate your report. First, we'll allow some questions from council, and then I promise the folks in the audience that if they have questions, we'll get to you as well. So other questions of council?
Does this take into, some of your figures, does it take into consideration that some of the people working in the offices may choose to stay later, invite friends down to Ferndale to stay for dinner, therefore utilizing some of that parking space?
Not specifically, unless that's built, I'm sure some of that's built into the model, because the model's really built upon people doing counts like this at freestanding places.
Yeah, but we can't expect that, you know, if there's 800 people working in the building, 800 cars, we can't expect that by 5 or 6 o'clock, all 800 of them are gonna be gone.
No, and that graph did show that. It doesn't drop off to zero at 5:30.
Yeah.
But it starts going down.
Okay.
Oh, I have lots of questions, but, you know, I'm holding my breath for everybody else.
Let me ask, this is really minutia, but in one of your graphs, I think it was Lot, I'm looking for it, I lost it, one of the lots, oh, here it is, Lot 7 has 104% capacity. How is that possible? Were they parked on the sidewalks, or?
Yeah, no, seriously. People park in the aisles at the end of the row, you know, it's, people squeeze in where they can.
With their tickets?
It might not be a, quote, legal parking spot, but they're there.
They're there, yeah.
All right.
Well, I have lots of questions, but first I wanted to start with an observation. My observation from this report is that 50% of our parking lots are vacant most of the day, and so we have... And, um, so we have opportunity to fill those parking lots with new workers, new residents, um, so that our parking lots aren't vacant fifty percent time of the day. That was my takeaway of that, that there's actually room to help bring new people into the downtown during the daytime, which is what our retailers have been looking for in our businesses, so that they have more foot traffic during the day. My questions to, uh, for you are sort of about the methodology, and I wanted to express sort of my concerns and ask questions about what I think is sort of omitted from this report. And so, um, the baseline scenario of your report assumes that there's no mode shift in travel choice, that the parking needs is based on everyone driving to get to work, and, uh, everybody needs a car to get to Ferndale to live in our downtown. And so, uh, and it also uses existing framework of people commuting, um, commuting to work, uh, to downtown apartments and office workers about how we were getting there. So this is based off of historical data, but it's not looking at sort of our future. And I've been really working hard on our future, and that future includes, uh, bus rapid transit. And so, uh, bringing bus rapid transit down to the Woodward corridor, and in two thousand sixteen, it will most likely be voted on, hopefully, with the regional tax if you have built. So, one of my questions is, um, we know that it's, when transit is built, and it's efficient and rapid, that it actually lowers demand for parking. So is this study based on filling a gap of the next two, three years before transit is built, and we might overbuild parking and spend twenty, thirty years paying off a construction bond that tries to fill a two, three-year gap? Or are we just trying to fill parking demands, uh, right now based off of people driving? And my opinion is, of course I have them, um, is that, you know, we, as Ferndale is always looking at our values of a walkable transit community, non-motorized friendly, we're heavily investing in non, non-motorized so that people can walk and bike. And so, um, I question whether or not we've done enough scenario planning about our future with this report, about changing the habits of our people once we, uh, get transit. And I know we are in a very awkward period of no transit and having a really demanding parking problem at peak times. But I also know, in the latest cranes down in Midtown, developers in the city are saying, we don't need as many parking spots because transit is coming. And the Strathmore just reduced, uh, the number of parking that they're going to require for people to have. So transit's not even working yet, and they're changing, uh, how many parking spots they need based off of future transit. So, based off of that, I'd like to see something included in this with some future scenario planning, not just on existing travel patterns of, of driving.
Um, the, um, shared demand model that we used, um, we did make some adjustments in there for dr, driving ratios, and it's, I didn't have it in the presentation, but it is in the, in the report. We used a seventy-five percent driving ratio for retail customers to account for their, that walk-in traffic, if you will. And we used a ninety percent factor for the retail and office employees, um, and ninety-three percent driving ratio for the residents and visitors to those residents in the condos or apartments, whatever they are. All of the drive ratios, except for the retail customer ones, are based on census data for Ferndale. So it's, you know, recent past, but you're right, it doesn't look forward into the future.
Right, well, census data doesn't indicate, you know, a new residential building of a hundred people is going to attract the, you know, millennials and boomers who don't want to drive. So we're assuming that the people who want to live in a mixed-use downtown want to drive everywhere.
Sure.
When we know that they don't.
And, and that's the beauty of the model. We can go in and make those adjustments for, um, the scenarios you're talking about.
Right. I bring this up, this is because I don't, my concern is, I don't want to overbuild parking in Ferndale. Uh, this is a very delicate mix of trying to solve, uh, a downtown problem with new, uh, new office space and residential. But knowing Ferndale, and we've always been on the precipice of, you know, innovation and doing, you know, the best urban planning for our downtown, um, I, I just question whether or not this report is taking us in that direction, or if we're sort of doing, this is what status quo is, and, and I'm not sure I'm to have a decision-making point yet. I mean, I know we're not making any decisions, but I'm, I'm thinking very critically about this, and I, I want to make sure, um, that our future is also included in this. And I also have a problem of Woodward being as a physical barrier. My God, we are spending so much money to remove that barrier, and with bus rapid transit and, uh, having complete streets and putting on, uh, cycle tracks, our future is trying to reduce that barrier. So if we plan on parking to maintain a barrier or sort of make that barrier even, you know, bigger, I, I don't know. These are just the, the thoughts that I have as we talk about the number of parking spaces. And then when I distill the number of parking spots, it's a seventy percent increase in the number of parking spots near downtown. That's what missing, is missing from the slides, the percentage of increase of parking spots in our downtown.
Of three sixty.
Of, of three sixty. Um, and so, you know, it's good to have residential, and it's great to have office space, you know, it fills up the fifty percent vacancy that we have, um, but is it the right mix elsewhere? And so, I'm not sure this report has concluded, has brought me to a conclusion yet, and that wasn't my point tonight, um, but those are the things I'll be looking for from the city and the planning department and the DDA, um, and Carl Walker going forward.
Sort of a related, I guess, question, but, and maybe this is to Bill. One of my general takeaways there is that the numbers don't indicate the parking problem that we seem to perceive that we have. You probably get that, right? We all just generally assume that we've got a parking problem. I haven't heard any bigger issue since I've been mayor than do something about parking. Your numbers are interesting in that almost never do we reach our, uh, capacity, we never reach our capacity, and we almost never reach our, uh, the phrase you use, the effective supply.
Effective.
So, why is that, first of all?
It's pretty typical. Um, and what happens is, when the demand starts bumping up against that effective supply threshold and maybe occasionally crossing it, that's when people start saying, there's not enough parking spaces, because you're bumping up against that threshold and takes a long time to search out that last available space. Those last available spaces at those peak times might be in, what is it, lot number one, which is up on the, on the north end of, of, of the study area? So they're harder to find. They may, they may be perceived as being too far away.
Yeah.
But yet there are empty spaces in the system.
Now, on that point, our, our DDA, I believe, has just sort of recommended that we look at concentric parking, which essentially means different pricing for different lots. Is that something that you agree and support would help level out this issue?
That, that's something we can take a look at.
I know it wasn't part of this report.
It's a demand management tool.
Is it, right?
Yeah, I, I question to a degree where the rate bands are currently, if there's a level that you can go to that makes it enticing to folks, but it's always.
Because it's pretty cheap now, in other words?
Yes.
And, okay.
Right.
On west of Woodward, on west of Woodward, in the current, in the current scenario, um, can you tell me what the, what you believe the current, uh, if you believe there's a current shortage of parking, and if so, what that would be?
Um, west of Woodward.
Yeah.
At the peak time.
At peak times, Thursday, Saturday night, apparently.
Let me flip over to my note, back note page here. Um, the total supply, um, well, let's, let's back up. Peak demand, weekends, about seven hundred and seventy-eight spaces. Now, that's, that's bumping up, right bumping up or just a few spaces above that effective supply threshold.
Okay.
So a shoot from the hip number, adding fifteen percent to that, that gets you up to eight hundred and ninety-four spaces. So subtracting out the existing supply of eight fifty-four, that means you need about eighty more spaces over there to, to make everybody.
Current, under, no projects know anything, but current.
And, you know, i, if that cushion is ten percent, then it, then instead of eighty spaces, you're adding forty spaces. But it's somewhere in that range.
May I, just to shake you back off your comment?
Sure.
And I, let me start by saying, I, I do appreciate all the detail and work you did on this, and I don't want to sound critical of the findings or anything like that, but I don't believe the eighty-four spaces. Because, um, again, your study doesn't include all of the cars, and there are many, many, many cars dumping out onto the neighborhood streets. And whether it's due to an experiential issue that I think West Breckenridge is too far to walk into town or, or what have you, but I think the experience coming into downtown Ferndale on, on those peak times, I, I think the need gets to be much greater than that because of the, the whole residential experience. And that's just something that I keep going back to.
Turnover.
And you'll never get rid of all of that. I mean, honestly, some of it is, I don't want to pay the meter, right? So I can park for free on the street or what have you, um, without, you know, residential zones, but, um, yeah, just, just my thoughts on that.
I have some other questions. Was bicycle parking taken into consideration, too, as part of the parking study?
It was not.
It was not? Okay. And what about employee parking? I know that we probably did a study of how many employees are parking in our high priority lots. I know it's been part of the DDA board, uh, discussion about how do we get, uh, we leave some pressure on some of our key parking lots, um, to get employees to, um, park at lesser demand, uh, spots. And I was wondering if that would alleviate some pressure, at least for the short term, or be part of?
Absolutely it would, you know. Currently, you've got folks that, you know, are employees of local bars, restaurants, that have, uh, an ability to purchase a hang tag or a monthly parking pass through the DDA. They're parking anywhere.
Through the city.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
They can park anywhere that they want in the system. Certainly, you know, as we talked about, we have an enforcement program enforcing that. I know our Republic employees are working with Joe as far as that issue. We haven't rolled out anything definitively, obviously, but we're looking at, at things relative to that. But the point is, yes, enforcement would help considerably. Uh, you, what I've noticed, and this is more anecdotal, I've spent a lot of time down here during certain key times, uh, just walking, that's what I do. You see a lot of folks that have those hang tags that are taking the premium spots. When I say premium, those closest to the retail establishments. Uh, and, and a lot of these cases, some of these lots are, I wouldn't say full, a hundred percent, but quite a few, especially the smaller lots. So you need to have a way in which to enforce and move people, ideally the, the retail employees, bars, restaurateur employees, uh, out away so that the patrons can get the closer spots and create turnover. Unfortunately, those cars are going to sit for seven, eight, ten hours, where your average person coming downtown might only be here three hours.
And just to remind Counsel and the public, over the last year, we've been working to evolve a, a lot of our operations, and part of that, uh, speaking with parking permits is, uh, the launch of an actual official parking permit application that formalizes the application process for business owners and their employees. Uh, that did a couple of things that allowed us to capture the data, so we have a better understanding of which lots are experiencing the most, uh, employment traffic. Um, and two, we did roll out with that application, um, a memo and a brochure that did show employees where long-term parking is located, and we direct that, um, in municipal lots. We are now enforcing that, um, more fully, uh, since we've partnered with Republic Parking, with parking enforcement towards the end of the year. So, uh, I would like to point out, we do, uh, recognize the issue, and we are continuing to evolve and improve the process. Um, we are also continuing to evolve the enforcement that is represented in the residential parking zones. Uh, so you will be seeing Republic Parking enforcement officers out there in the neighborhoods and in the lots enforcing these now.
So maybe this is a good opportunity, because I know there's a lot of folks here, and I'm just guessing, some of you might want to talk parking. Uh, I'll, I'll take this opportunity to ask if there's anyone from the public that would like to either comment or ask a question of our parking consultants at this point.
Let me get my stuff out of the way here for you.
But don't go far. All right. Good evening.
Good evening, Counsel, and thank you very much. That was a very informative, uh, discussion. Um, my name is Jay Spyro, and I live at four oh five West Breckenridge, and I own Majishi Martial Arts in downtown Ferndale. Been there for twenty-one years. And I represent not only myself, but many of the little independent businesses that have organically grown up in Ferndale, uh, the, uh, library books, the Crane Optical, Shine On Yoga. There's forty of us who, um, have, uh, have been very concerned about three sixty and are very interested in this parking study. And, um, I, uh, I want to be really clear that I think that we're the ones that make Ferndale cool. And, uh, more sports bars, uh, I don't think aren't really necessary in our environment in order to, to make this place vital. Um, so, we take away one of those lots for two years, few years, one year, while we in, so we can increase parking. And, uh, what happens? Our businesses will not survive two years, three years with half the parking that we now have. We can't. So we need a reasonable parking plan. Counsel, please, a reasonable parking plan. You saw the numbers. You have your doubts about the numbers. I know my students who come at seven o'clock on Friday night have a heck of a time, but they are not going to be able to make it in when these lots, some of these lots, what have you got for us in terms of transitional plan to enable us to survive? Will you kill us in order to have a higher density downtown? Please don't do that.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to address Counsel? Tom, I saw you coming up. Come on, Tom. Haven't seen you, Counsel, in a while. Good evening, sir.
I forgot what you looked like.
TV's only one way, but, but Happy New Year. It's hard to follow Jay. Just a couple of comments about the study.
Yeah.
First of all, you know, it's a study, and they're percentages, and we have modal problems and, and whatnot. I don't think we'll ever be satisfied that anyone's going to give us the perfect studies we're going to look at and say, oh, my gosh, that's it. Yeah, that's our answer.
I wish it was that easy.
For now in the future. So to a certain part, you know, it's a, it's a guess, it's a study, and it's a bet that you're, that we're making, one way or the other, and to decide which bet you feel good on making. Is it when the craze for parking? And I understand, uh, your anxieties about that with the, with the modes changing, but at the, at the risk of being cavalier to the environment, you can never have too many parking spots, because there's only all kinds of things that can do with that little piece of pavement. People have garage sales in parking structures. We have festivals that fill up the street, and if we end up with a few extra spots, there's no reason those spots in the parking structures can't be used. There are uses for those spots, you know, for retail, for shows, for demos, for, for recreation, you know, um, all kinds of reasons. So, is, if you're not wasting space, if it's vertical and you're not wasting the space, then there's really no loss. We have commuter traffic. Imagine people who might be coming to Ferndale to hop on some piece of mass transit, or to grab a bus to go to a downtown event, or to commute downtown. What better place to drop your car off than Ferndale on the way back, have a pop, get your yoga in, get your fitness in, hop back in your car, and drive out to no place that could be as good as Ferndale could be. But anyway, um, it won't be there as a bet, as a study. They're percentages, they're what they are. Just, we have to make a bet. We've been studying this stuff for years.
Yes, we have.
And we either, you know, listen to our retail people who tell us that, you know, losing the str, the parking we have will kill them, and that's on Counsel to decide with if that's a trigger they want to pull, or if it's, you know, leave it as it is and try and go wider. We had a study, remember the, when we designed Ferndale, and they were talking about having bigger buffers around the retail downtown area, having playgrounds between the parking lots and the residents?
You mean pocket parks?
Is, is that what the name form was, was pocket parks?
Yeah.
And there's this whole idea, we have residents that claim, you know, we, residential areas too close to downtown. I mean, who's to say that someone at some point is going to come by and buy some of that residential area, make our downtown bigger, create bigger buffer zones, and create a new vision for downtown Ferndale? By some point, it's a bet. Best of luck.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Good evening, members of the Council.
Good evening.
I'm Sue Ferrari, and I'm at four oh five West Breckenridge also. And, um, some of the things that you pointed out, Councilwoman Piana, about the ten days of study, I concur with you. It's not very significant when you're only looking at ten days in October, from the twenty-eighth to the eighth of November. to the 8th of November. Statistically, it's pretty insignificant when you look at the whole year and what goes on here in Ferndale. Some of the other things that you guys talked about were also pretty interesting. And one of them is that our terminology of retail space. We allow housing per capita of how many units and how many cars we're going to allow per house or the structure that we're talking about building. But we're not all considered retail space. In fact, I don't think bars are considered retail space. Right?
Right.
Okay. I don't think that the service industry, as the martial arts unit, the yoga units, the nail salons, the hair salons, none of those are considered retail space.
No, they are.
They are not.
Yeah.
So when we look at this, when we look at this summary...
And they consider...
We're not really looking at the entire spectrum of what our community is. Some other things that I've considered are, for a viable option, we had a parking plan that we had a few years ago that talked about a structure to the west of the library. Now, I am with you, councilwoman Piana, let's put down some barriers and Woodward shouldn't be a barrier. And we are trying to make this a whole community and we're not very big. I mean, our total square miles are...
3.9.
Thank you. I was going to say three, but okay, 3.9 or four square miles. I can see councilwoman's vision of having this as an entire walking community or a bicycling community where we reduce the number of parking spaces that we actually really physically need because people are trying to be more green, more ergonomic, and four miles isn't very far to walk. I bet some of you do that jogging. Some of you do that bicycling. I bet four miles in a day on your job, you're doing that. So my consideration is that we need to look a little bit beyond what the numbers are because, as we all know, statistics can be modified for the purpose that we are looking at. And if we ignore that and we don't look deeper into what these things are saying, we're kind of overshadowing everything. A long last thing, and I think Councilman Martin said it, it was about where these people are parking that are employees. Well, I got to tell you, oftentimes I talk to many of the employees from the bars and restaurants that park in front of my house or down my street or on Withings Street because we know them, we see them, we frequent these places to eat. And they're not paying because nobody wants to pay for an eight or 10-hour shift even at a reduced rate in a parking lot or a parking structure. Now, if you went to survey these employees, they would say that would be a huge cut in Nobody wants to pay for that. And if you could each get away with not paying for parking, like in some cities like Birmingham, they have free parking at certain times during the structure, you would park there. Because people don't want to pay. Our economy's already taxed enough. The students that come to Jay's school, because of the hours that we allot for parking and paying, that stops at 9:00, each student that comes to that school pays three, four, five, and six times a week. That's the dedication of her students that come to this place. And yes, do they go out to eat afterwards? Many of them do. So I think we need to take a deeper look before we develop something that's out of proportion and astronomical as far as figures. We really need to take a really heartfelt look at what we're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address council?
Hi, council.
Good evening.
My name's Vito Marshone and I own Shine On Yoga here in Ferndale. And I think that if you were to ask anyone, and I have a, we have a lot of clients come in and they're usually rushing because they've spent 10 minutes trying to find a parking spot. And if you ask anybody that comes to Ferndale often, they'll tell you, yes, there is a parking problem, even though the figures we heard tonight really don't represent that. And I think that if you, if you look at the parking in general and you look further north, out of the right downtown area, those parking spaces, you can basically forget about those spaces. They're not really relevant for what we're talking about because all the action happens right down here in the epicenter of Ferndale, not further north. And anyone that comes to Ferndale and wants to spend time and money in Ferndale wants to park in the epicenter of Ferndale because that's where they're going to be spending their time. They don't want to park up north and walk down Woodward to get into downtown. So those spaces really are not that relevant. And as far as building too many spaces, yes, there's, mass transit is starting to show its face slightly, maybe a half of one eye. And it's all coming from, any, any, any traffic coming from mass transit is going to come from south to north, not from north to south. And right now, most of, most of the traffic that comes into Ferndale comes from north to south. And that's all automobile traffic, not mass transit. And even the mass transit from south to north is going to take years to really develop to the point where we're going to experience traffic from that area. And don't forget that there's a lot of competition south of us. They're building, Detroit is starting to mobilize and revitalize and that causes a lot of, there's going to be a lot of competition for entertainment and restaurants and things like that south of us. So it doesn't really seem to me that a lot of traffic is going to move from south to north because there's going to be a lot down there for them to do. But my biggest concern of all is how you are going to handle the construction. If you go through a 360, how are you going to handle the construction of the parking at that particular time? If you completely eliminate a parking lot, and not only the parking lot, but there's going to be a lot of construction, there'll be construction workers parking around here, where are they going to park? There's going to be hundreds of them. And you don't think they're going to park on the streets? And, and then if you eliminate a whole parking lot, and God forbid you eliminate two large parking spaces at the same time, you're going to hurt the retail community down here so bad that it's going to, it's going to take a long time to recover.
Thank you.
And that is really what concerns me.
Four minutes, so, yeah. Yes, thank you, sir. Thank you. Good evening. You can, yeah, that'll come down.
Hi, I'm Michelle Lewis. I own Painting with a Twist. And I want to say, you know, Ferndale is a great place. I didn't know how great Ferndale was until a few years ago. Painting with a Twist is a paint and SIP art studio. And for the last three years, well, let me back up. Our Painting with a Twist studios, they're probably about 160 or so across the country, right? As of three years ago, Painting with a Twist Ferndale has ranked number one three years in a row. That's how great Ferndale is. We probably draw about 95% customers from outside of Ferndale, which this means that there is a need for transportation or for parking. As we just heard the gentleman go talk about who's coming from north and the construction and things that's going on, but that's south. Unfortunately, the study that was done by Carl Walker was probably done during our least busiest timeframe in July and November. You probably missed our busiest season, which I guess you can't really plan for the busiest, but somewhere in between. But those are our lowest, I guess, least busiest seasons or times of the year. I don't know what the solution is, but I'm begging to please look at this very seriously. As Jay and the other young lady mentioned, you shut down one lot, you're going to shut down several businesses here in the Ferndale area. Please think about this. This is a great place, Ferndale. Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. All right.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Digital lane photography. I love this town.
And DDA board member.
And a DDA board member. That was coming out. I love this town. I started my business here eight years ago and I've received a lot of, a lot of walk-in customers only because when I interview them, they can't find a parking spot. I, I got involved in the DDA for, for the reason of parking. I was on the parking committee, which now is involved with the city. We, and I don't say anything negative, I'm a very positive person, but the thing is, we've tried everything. We've looked at every avenue, you know? Now we have the 360 project facing us. And I've had business owners come up to me and ask me, what can we do? There's going to be construction, where are they going to park? So I'm sitting out in front of my building, I'm looking down the street, we had the art fair going on. I said, look at all the room on Nine Mile. Why don't you make Nine Mile one way and have cars park? There's plenty of room for them. I mean, this is one of the things I came out just from observation. I know it's hard, I know it's hard, but we've got to do something now so we don't lose any businesses here in Ferndale. That's about all I got to say, but just keep up the good work.
Thanks, Ed, and you do the same. Appreciate it.
God bless.
All right. Yeah, I got to wrap that up, I think. Good evening.
Good evening. Kent Tram, Trams Meet, 327 West Nine Mile. We're on the, we're at the Plantinum Lot and the one thing, the one observation I made looking at the numbers is every weekend, that lot is 100% full for at least one hour. And I didn't see that in those numbers. It's, it's not possible to get a spot. People are not only parked in every viable parking space, they're parked in between the handicap spots, they're parked along the fence waiting to get their food from Thai restaurant, which, congratulations to the Thai restaurant for being that successful. But I didn't see it represented. There should have been two or three dates when that lot was at 100, at least, you know, during one of those hour slots at 100% capacity. And it wasn't there. So I'm skeptical.
I was waiting for you, George. Good evening.
Good evening. I've been here for 14 years. Doesn't need to spend money to do a study because when you had, when you made the proposal, how many apartments you had, two people per apartment, boyfriend, girlfriend, husband and wife. When you have offices, technical offices, people, they have six, seven, eight people, they come anytime they want, they have no regular hours. And without the food and, the food industry, Ferndale wouldn't be nothing because retail is obsolete. Now downtown, my cousin has parking lot, nobody parks, they park in $10, $15, they're charging for parking lot. People, they go from north to south one time to try it, they never come go back. So all these people live in downtown, finish, finish school, they make 40, $45,000, they lift two, three people in one apartment, they don't have no cars, they ride bicycles, they roller skater. I know my cousin, they live there by the DAC. So anyway, the most people I did read, Grand Magazine article, every emphasis on the north because they are making the money, the north is established, they have the money. How come Birmingham, they are putting a new parking lot? Why? Because they are growing. They have six new restaurants going there. Birmingham growing. We have the same chance here, but you guys, the previous, you don't see the growth of Ferndale. You didn't see it. It took you too long. Bah, 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 too long. You need people with money and vision. Don't put your eggs in one basket. You listen to this guy from 360. You didn't ask, hey, man, I want to make a parking lot, I'm looking for contractor, I'm looking for builder. So you get different ideas to how you go, how to propose. You don't put your eggs in one person. That's mean something going on. If you put what, your eggs in one person, that's mean this guy, he's going to invite you for dinner, going to invite you for lunch, they're going to give you a ticket for vacation, God knows what's going on. So you still need a thousand parking spots. I start my life in parking lot. I had two parking lots, two parking lots, one lot 150 car, the other one has 450 car behind Hudson Building. So I know the business. You need a thousand parking spots because Ferndale, the way it's going, you want to go from north to south. South, never. I had yesterday a doctor resident at Ford, he was living downtown, he moved to Ferndale. That'll give you an example. So open your eyes and listen. And about the marijuana, you didn't ask, how can you control? Who's going to be taking care, the caretaker? What license he has? Who's going to be? So I might be, bring someone from the, from the street and I tell the guy, I'm the take care, take care, take care of this guy. So let him smoke weed. So you have to just open outside. Thank you.
Thank you, George. All right. Any, yes, sir. Waited very patiently, sir, how are you?
Good evening, council. My name is Saifou. I am from the Blue Isle, I've been in Ferndale over, I think, since 2001. So it is up and down with all the conversation I hear this, but I am for parking. If you don't bleed, if you don't have the pain, you'll no gain. And that's the way it is. My understanding, my feeling, of course, we have, we're going to suffer with the 360 or with the closure of the parking, but we have to come up with some kind of solution. I was in Detroit, we have no parking, the same problem we had. All today, the cities are gross, no matter what happened, they have a parking on the side. I was driving today up north to Birmingham, there were four left and right, they're building hotels with the parking. There, there, there's a pain everywhere. If we think that we're going to make it, somehow creating, as the council lady said, by having less, more traffic, biking, as a matter of fact, I live here also, I just moved in about three years ago. Even my state, Lebanon, it's no longer two-way, became one-way. The other halfway was bicycle and empty. We were driving one lane and coming down was one lane. I understand, I'm not resisting that, but Nine Mile is the heart of the city of Ferndale. We want it to be a vibrant place, we want it to be a downtown of midtown or you name it, of, of this Woodward. That will make this city, we're not working for today, we're not working for tomorrow, we have to work for the next generation. We have to do something for the next generation who will have a very proud downtown, a vibrant downtown with a good parking system. We might have a problem. If we need to, if the construction is there, we can find, we can create a bus, the way we do it downtown, we used to have a George Lewis Arena. We bring all those crowds back to downtown to Greek Town because we give them a free bus, a free this. We have to create this way how we can do it. If we come up, if I say I'm a retailer, I don't want this parking here, the other one come in, no, no, we don't need parking, we need bike, guess what? We'll not have nothing at the end of the day. So we should have a positive attitude we have to make, we should, we can, we can overcome it and let's work how to get downtown, this downtown to be the town. it, and let's work how to get downtown, this downtown to be the town. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Does Council have any more comments or questions?
Um, just, go ahead.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Um, the only thing I was going to say is, um, kind of to touch a point that Councilwoman Piana mentioned about building too large, and, and that we're not trying to solve one, one solution to then have a new problem. I guess I look at it as, even if we did, and I'm not, I'm not saying this is what I would support, I'm just sharing a thought, but if we were to build a structure, and it happened to in five or seven or eight years, have too many spots, we'd always have the other lots that we could use for redevelopment. And then we wouldn't have as many on-surface, you know, on-surface parking, increased density. Again, I'm not saying that's the solution I'm, I'm pushing, but it's, it's a thought.
Well, I think, if I may.
Sure.
Summarize, it's all about balance.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and finding the right mix, and I guess this is what the whole point of the study is, and we continue to talk about this, and I know we'll have a presentation in two weeks about 360. I'm thinking critically about it, and I know we heard a lot of concerns tonight about how do businesses be successful during the construction process. And I know, we're not at that point yet, but I hear you, I know it's a concern, city knows it's a concern, and while that's way off from actually starting to happen, I do want to say, we have a very great lesson going on right now, in which we can learn how to mitigate some of these challenges businesses are experiencing with construction, and that is Midtown and Downtown Detroit with the streetcar. It's intense down there, I know a couple people who might be involved in understanding what's happening with mitigation with some of those businesses, but we can learn from their creative ideas about how they're helping businesses be successful. And so, we're not going to start this alone, and when we come to that point, I, I know that Ferndale will tap into those resources to come up with a great plan and work with the businesses in the downtown. That's really at the end of this process, but I know it's an ongoing concern that I keep hearing from businesses as, as we talk about parking in the 360. So, it's not going away, but it will be big, a big part of our plan, no matter what construction project happens in our downtown, we'll have to address it. And with BRT, whenever that gets constructed, and hopefully before, you know, not too long.
The only other thing I wanted to share was, to tap on what Mr. Gagne and Melanie shared, is Lot 1 had a peak of 44% occupancy. That was the highest ever. We might want to consider, as I put on my park hat, maybe taking half of that and create a parking, a pocket park. Just a thought. Because it doesn't seem like anybody wants to walk three blocks to their destination.
Don't disagree with that, they don't.
They won't even walk to twist.
Sometimes I think we have a parking, a walking problem and not a parking problem.
We do have a walking problem and not a parking problem.
We have that in Detroit, too.
There is no question that, and that we, as the DDA has suggested, concentric parking and others, and these other parking management projects, processes need to be part of our thinking, that just having uniform lots all over the place and treating them all the same doesn't seem to make sense. So we, it's a little separate from what we asked the, the folks at Carl Walker to do, but certainly parking management in that kind of way is important as well, I think. Final thoughts? There's no action either tonight, a receive and file, I guess, is, this was just for informational purposes only, but it's important information, it is part of, I know people have been asking, what, what are you guys doing with this project? There's been a lot of stuff happening behind the scenes, analyzing the parking, analyzing the infrastructure, analyzing the bonding and financial capacity of the city to do it, as well as the developer reacting to, to the concerns that were heard. So I just want you to know, there's been a lot of work going on, this is just one piece of the things that have been happening over the last 10 months, and as Councilwoman Piana said, in two weeks, we expect the developers to be here to, to present an updated concept of the project, so more to follow. All right, let's move on to our last item, I apologize to the folks that are here for that one, but consideration of a billboard variance appeal for 3371 Hilton. And Derek, I think this is, again, you to introduce, is that correct?
It is. All over the place, nine o'clock. Good evening, the applicant is here appealing the decision of the City Planning Commission regarding the denial of a variance to allow a billboard sign at the location. As Planning Commission is aware, the city's sign ordinance prohibits billboards across the board in the city right now as a sign.
I'm sorry, Derek, can we just give you 20 seconds?
Yeah.
Just, yeah, just, keep it down while you're leaving, we appreciate that you're here, but we're not done.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. All right, so, the applicant is here, is here appealing a decision of the Planning Commission denying a variance to allow a billboard sign to be located at the property at the southwest corner of Hilton and the 696 Expressway Service Drive, it's currently being used as a gas station. The applicant requested a sign permit to allow a billboard sign on-premise to identify uses not currently occupying the property. That violates the city's sign ordinance on, on basically two fronts. One, the sign ordinance prohibits billboards as signage in the city, as it does many other types of signs, and a billboard is a prohibited sign. The city does have existing billboard signs in that are grandfathered in under that ordinance that are allowed to continue in perpetuity, as long as they're maintained in good stead and, and meeting all the other requirements of the ordinance. Staff denied the permit request for the billboard sign at this location. Per the ordinance, the applicant appealed that, or requested a variance from the city's Planning Commission in regards to that sign. The Planning Commission held a public hearing and unanimously recommended denial of that variance, or, or denied that variance. As per the ordinance, the applicant then has the ability to appeal that denial to City Council, in which he is here doing tonight. I will allow the applicant to get up and introduce their case, but.
Before you do that, I apologize, and I probably just missed it, but you said it was denied for two reasons, the first is that the ordinance prohibits billboards, what's the second?
Uh, it's, it was, requested a variance to allow a billboard sign, but the ordinance also prohibits off-premise signs.
Okay.
Which this sign isn't connected to any specific business located on the parcel, but mainly because billboard signs are prohibited in total.
What would be an example of an off-premise sign that wasn't a billboard?
If, if Restaurant X wanted to advertise their restaurant on a parcel of property that the restaurant isn't currently located at, so.
But the sign is going on private property.
Correct, it is going on private property, but it doesn't identify a business located at the property.
Like you see along the freeway all the time.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, our ordinance, the main point is that our ordinance prohibits those signs across the board, they're prohibited sign, similar, there's a, a long list of signs that are prohibited within the city.
Is that, like that, in, in most jurisdictions? That's pretty strict.
It is, it is consistent with all the other communities I've worked with in the past, and is not unusual for a city to prohibit billboard signs in this state of the nation.
Well, I understand, you don't want billboard signs in the middle of your downtown, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, I understand that.
Is impeachment an issue? I mean, I understand the two reasons there, but what's next to those properties? That property?
As far as land use?
Service drive.
Uh, to the north is the Service Drive and residential across, to the west, along the Service Drive is residential, and I believe there's a place of worship relatively close.
Well, it's, it's an apartment building.
Yeah, residential, and then.
And the place of worship is farther up at the end of the street.
So it's residential, and then I do believe there's a place of worship within half a mile or a mile. And then to the east across Hilton is another commercial location that has a strip commercial development in it. And to the south is commercial as well, on the same side of the street.
So, commercial, commercial, Service Drive and the apartment building?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Immediately adjacent.
Right.
Good evening.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the Council. I'm David Heron, I, my address is 130 East Nine Mile Road, I'm with Foley in Mansfield, just, I can't.
A stone's throw away.
A stone's throw away, and, and parking only, in long-term parking now. We've been, we've been advised with, by Republic that our.
That's enough about parking.
We should park in the middle, away from everybody else. But I do use Dino's, so I'm, I'm really a customer also.
He's back there, and he appreciates that.
Yes. Let me say this, our, first of all, I think you point out, Councilman, one of the first points that we made, there are billboards throughout the communities around here. We have billboards up and down, not up and down, but a number on Woodward, that I've been here forever. There's one right outside my window, overlooking, right on Woodward and Nine, and I looked at Justice, now Justice Richard Bernstein's face for about four months, all summer. Every little spot on his, on his face. He's gone now, and now I don't know what it is, it's to save my home, I think, today. And it's right out my window. The location we're talking about is on the freeway, which we see up and down freeways throughout the communities. Many other communities do restrict billboards, but for instance, I live in Farmington Hill, live in Farmington Hills, I was on the Planning Commission, and we have, allowed billboards in L, LI districts, light industrial, but not in others. And those light industrials tend to run on, on the freeway, on 696 and 275, where they invite people largely into the communities, and they do, as you rush by on the, on the freeways, they do invite you into the community. I think the mock-up we gave to Council shows a sign with welcome to Ferndale, and we could have other signs of that nature, people down in Ferndale, away from 696, all the businesses that were here earlier that want people to come in. Now, we can go on and on, but if there was no ban, if this was a limited use throughout the community, I think this spot would be perfect. I can, I can look at the, at the ordinance and talk about, and we have done it, why this isn't a nuisance, et cetera. But if there was no ban, I think we could all agree, I would hope you would agree, that on a gas station on Hilton, or at Hilton in the freeway, where there's a sign across the street by MDOT, where MDOT would limit other signs to 1,000 feet away, and there's one to the, to the west, 1,000 or 2,000 feet. MDOT does not allow signs closer than 1,000 feet, even if our ordinance allowed them closer on one of their highways. So there wouldn't be a lot of signs, even if you allowed this one, or others, in that area, so clutter wouldn't be a problem. There is industrial, or commercial, industrial down Hilton, as we know, and at various spots to the, to the east, and then there's the interchange to the east. So this is really a perfect spot for, if, again, if there was no ban, there is a ban. If, if there were no other billboards in Ferndale, and there was a ban, I think the city attorney would agree with me, I would hope, that that would be inappropriate. That would violate state law, if there were no other billboards and you were stopping them. I think that's what's going to happen here, because our signs are in older buildings, a lot of them, that exist in town, and with redevelopment, as you've just been speaking about, the one right outside my window at the corner of Nine and, and Woodward, I mean, that building could be redeveloped, it could fall down now, but it could be redeveloped, and the sign would not be rebuilt. I think Woodward doesn't permit new signs by state or federal law because of the highway it is. So, soon or later, sooner or later, we will have a ban on all signs, and that would violate state law and be unconstitutional. So I think by having the ban right now, and, and this is jumping ahead past the variance, I recognize, this is a request that at some point, perhaps, you reconsider the ban, but if that happened, and I think the ban is inappropriate right now, because attrition will end up with no signs, then this is a good spot. And I've indicated, and I don't want to, it's now quarter to 10, and you certainly are more tired than I am, and I think that this is a, an appropriate spot, we, city attorney went through the whole list of requirements, I tried to respond in the material I brought, and I'm not going to repeat it. And we ask you to reverse the Planning Commission, allow this, light will, there will not be any light, at the Planning Commission, somebody mentioned light overflow into the residence. It's point, we, we've given some luminaire statistics, it points towards the freeway, it complies with state law, so it, and it won't be digital, won't be flashing or anything, we see some of those. It would not be digital, and, and it would encourage people to recognize, I think more and more people would advertise from the businesses that were here, and so I ask you to, based on what we submitted already to the, to the Council and in your package, Mr. Mayor, to overturn the, the city. The owner is a, is representative, the owner is here, Justin Oram, and he is a Michigan resident, he's a businessman, he has other billboards, and would work with the city to make sure that the content is appropriate, and, and would support the city throughout the ownership of that billboard.
Is this facing both east and westbound traffic, or just eastbound?
It would prob, it would, it would be a, probably a triangle.
Okay.
So it would face both ways, but not, not back in that neighborhood.
Okay, gotcha.
Any other questions?
Maximal height is 70 feet, so the top of it, the very top, would be 70 feet.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, but my understanding is, the Planning Commission made their decision based on current ordinance. So what's before us today is a request for an appeal of the Planning Commission, which is odd, because is, is the Planning Commission the only group that we are the appellate body for? I don't know. We don't have a lot, we don't get a lot of these sort of cases, do we?
I, you know, I've expressed concern over that exact thing, I don't know that this body is the appropriate one, and I think it's not pertinent to what we do today, but long term, that we take a look at changing that.
Yeah.
Because I don't think the Planning Commission's appeals should come here personally.
I agree, because it makes sense that the Council would take up the policy of outdoor signs, it's odd that we would be here today acting in this role. So I just want to differentiate between us having a deliberation about the sign policy, which is not what we're really able to do this evening, and reviewing the, the opinion of the Planning Commission. I keep looking at you, Dan. Am I accurate?
Maybe I can weigh in on that just a little bit.
Help me understand that.
And, and some of the background of that is, the Plant Commission, several years ago, wished for it to be designed this way, the ordinance, and, and most ordinances, issues as, touching on zoning, go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, which was proposed, and the Plant Commission preferred that that not occur. And, so this is an unusual circumstance, that issue as it relates to whether, on a going-forward basis, this issue should come to Council, is certainly something that I think is under consideration. As it relates to the matter before you this, this evening, it is whether the Plant Commission was appropriate in its deliberations of the appeal from the building inspector's determination that the proposed sign was not allowed because billboards are prohibited. So, as the applicant's counsel has indicated and touched on, when he suggested that perhaps down the road, as billboards go away, there may be some policy consideration for this board, I think that's, certainly I think, what I think should occur, should Council believe that this is a appropriate location for a billboard. As it's presented this evening, it's, it's as an appeal, the appeal component, it, it seems that, that the text of the ordinance is quite clear, that billboards are prohibited. Council's suggestion that, had there not been any billboards in the city, that there might be exclusionary zoning by a, an outright ban, I think would be accurate if there weren't 20 billboards in the city, and, and I think the case law would support that position in light of the 20 billboards that are currently there. So, it. So it, he indicated in his materials, in his submittal criteria, that he believes weigh in favor of a finding of practical difficulty or perhaps unnecessary hardship. I, I would suggest that, I, I don't think that the criteria that he's identified rises to that level, but the property certainly is being used for a purpose. It's a, a gas station right now. It is being used. And so it's, I think it's the department's suggestion, and it's certainly my opinion, that this appeal is not appropriate. But should council believe that the ultimate issue, which the applicant is proposing as it relates to a possible billboard in this or certain other zone districts in the future, if that's something that they think should be studied, then I think that the appropriate methodology would be to have that issue studied for possible amendment to the, to the ordinance, which would allow billboards within the framework of what council thinks is appropriate as far as location.
Dan, in terms of this issue of eventually you would lose the billboards, you know, to redevelopment, to a point where you've effectively created a ban, I mean...
There, there are ordinances that have amortization provisions, which...
I guess my question is, within our current ordinance, could you move a billboard without increasing the net amount? Once a billboard is taken off of a location, it's gone forever?
It's grandfathered at the specific location.
At the specific location.
Now, I mean, there, you know, I don't believe that it's in front of you. This evening, there was some talk about perhaps the elimination of, at one point in time, and I'm not sure if that's really on the table, elimination of a particular billboard, whether it would make sense in this location. Again, the process that I would think would be appropriate for council would be to study that other location.
But, but my question, that's currently not allowed under our sign ordinance?
No, it's not.
Moving a billboard from Site A to Site B?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may just clarify one thing. What we are asking for, I threw, I, I discussed the, the policy issues, I know that. But what we are asking for is a variant, or we asked before, council, uh, planning commission was a variance in the ordinance. The ordinance provides for, ordinances provide for certain height, certain use, et cetera. We're asking for variance of the ordinance that bans billboards in this particular location. They also ban in other locations, but in this particular location, we ask for a variance, and we've pointed out, and again, given the hour, I don't want to repeat everything we've written, but it's in front of you, why a variance would be appropriate. So you're right, it, it is a strange proceeding to come to council as opposed to the zoning board of appeals and then court. And that's the typical approach for, for, for planning commissions and CBA's. I don't know the history. Obviously, the city attorney does know the history, and I, I don't disagree, obviously. But it's here. And so while I'm talking policy, et cetera, I am saying, asking formally for a variance of the ordinance that would ban a billboard in this particular space. What happens in the rest of the city is, is the problem of those owners.
In a certain light, it makes sense. I think the planning commission did exactly the right thing based on the ordinance that we set. And if there is going to be a variance to that ordinance, since it's our policy that have come up through us, but I guess it's a discussion for another day.
Yeah, they filed a letter of law.
Yeah, I, I don't have an issue with that.
I don't have an issue with that, but I, I think that, in this instance, where it's located, and its intended purpose, and some variety that we might get out of this, I, I think, I see nothing but a benefit. Derek, planning commission, yep, you did your job, and basically that's it, and I apologize for that. But I think I might lean the other way on this one. But I, I don't, you know, we'll see.
I'm a little torn, but I do want to start out with the fact that I received a package on my door sometime over the weekend, I think. And I have not opened it because I noticed that the return address was from the person bringing forward this request. And I didn't know whether or not these materials were being shared with staff and council. And I didn't want to be privy to information that everyone else wasn't, so I have not opened this, but I just wanted that to be on record, that I received this package of information.
I think we all got one.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I, I, I wasn't sure.
Well, I, I, in fairness, I didn't deliver them. I believe my client probably did. But it's, it's a package similar to this, and it contains all the materials that were already available. The, the date, there was some confusion about the date of this hearing, so we brought it forward in another copy so everybody would have it instead of later. But it, it isn't different for everybody, and it wasn't supplied.
I, I didn't know, you know, I...
And I apologize.
That's okay. I, I trust the information coming from staff, because I then know that everyone else on council has the same information, but...
Absolutely.
The, the issue I have, and, and I may be wrong on this, what I'm torn with, is it sounds like at some point in the past, from what I've read, that the planning commission recommended an alternative design to what was originally presented, and that design was then re-presented, and now they're being denied? No?
No.
Okay.
No design work has been done.
My understanding was the first time that it was presented, it was presented as a flat billboard that was visible on both sides, and now it's presented as a V billboard, which was recommended by planning commission, so that the visibility was away from the residential area. That somehow I gathered this from...
There, there may have been some discussion at design from the planning commission, but no time did the planning commission recommend a design or imply that one design was more acceptable than another, regardless of how originally submitted.
Okay.
So if there was any conversation about design, it was only for clarification of what was intended, not a recommendation from the planning commission that something was more acceptable than, than not.
Okay.
So I, let me just say, you know, in general, I, I think our billboard, outdoor sign policy was created, I don't know, maybe in the 70s or something, there were a lot of litigation around it. It's, it's very prohibitive, and there may be folks that think that that's absolutely appropriate. To me, it seems odd, when you ride up Woodward, you have two, like, 10-story billboards, and it never has seemed to cause that much stir. So, so it's a very strict ordinance. To me, the fact that it doesn't even allow you to move a billboard from Site A to Site B is, is very strict. And I'm, like, open to looking at whether or not the, the strictness of our, our outdoor ordinance is still appropriate, but that's a different conversation. I think, I tend to agree that the, I do agree that the planning commission did what, they acted on the laws of the city of Ferndale today, and that they, they did what they can. So I'm not inclined to, to support the variance today, but I am open personally for whatever that's worth in the future of, of looking at the severity of that ordinance and whether or not there could be exceptions.
If I may, as the council representative to the planning commission, who is there making this decision, I, I think the planning commission did find, follow the letter of law, but I also think it's the spirit of making sure that our community has a really great appearance to it. And I think the old way of planning with the single-story, you know, sign along the highway is now known as visual clutter, particularly along exits on the highway, which the state has changed those to icon signs. So you can no longer put a big shell sign on a big pole, and now they, they're the blue signs, the icons, saying, you know, right, left, proved that way, right? So communities are sort of removing those types of signs out of their, out of their zoning. And so I, to me, this is in the spirit of that, of having, reducing the visual clutter, and particularly along the highway there. I think 696 is very narrow, very close to residents, it's very close to Harding Park, and I think it's part of the aesthetics of the community. I'm supporting the command, uh, planning commission's vote to deny this variance.
Other comments?
No, I, I think we're going to be seeing this again, probably will, yes, but I think we're going to be seeing this again down the road.
So a motion would be in order.
I move that city council denies the variance application to allow a single-board sign at 3351 Hilton, Sidwell number 25-24, 228-029, and 2527-228-002, with the following findings, after publicly it was held, as set and published for the date and place, with the findings and conditions, no conditions, with the findings as noted.
Is there support? Moved by Piana and supported by Polka. Further discussion. Ma'am, Marty, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Lennon?
No.
Martin?
No.
Polka?
Yes, with explanation.
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
I messed up.
All right.
What was the motion, to deny?
To deny.
To deny.
You're saying you don't want to deny it?
I don't want to deny it. Oh, yes.
No, you're a no.
You're a no.
You're a no.
You don't want to deny it.
I'm a no. It's getting late, folks.
I'm sorry. So we have a no, a no, a yes?
With explanation and a yes.
A yes with explanation and a yes. And I am a yes.
Okay.
And my explanation is, I would like to see us look at this ordinance again, and I'd like to see that happen within the next couple of weeks, if not weeks. Because this very nice gentleman has been trying to deal with this issue for several years, and it feels like we just keep allowing him the opportunity to spin his wheels.
Can I, if I may, also add some explanation. I, I don't support removing the ban on billboards. My particular issue is with the site, which I drove by a couple times and walked. And so I think it's appropriate for some exception-level decision-making, whether it's here, however we decide that looks like in the future. But I don't want to, I don't want to take this as an indication, I want to go back to the ban on billboards. I want a vetting process with an appeals, because I think there may be specific cases that, you know, we can have opinion on.
Okay.
I think that was your first-time vote.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Yes, we will talk to you again, I believe. All right. Next item of business would be call to council. Police chief, anything for the good of the community?
Very briefly, your honor, we will be asking at the next city council meeting for a resolution for the passing. One of our retired police officers, William Bill Dunn, passed away last week. He was a veteran of Ferndale Police Department. He started, he was, was a department with both Councilman Lennon and I. We worked with him for many years. After he retired with a disability pension after a very horrific accident on Nine Mile Road back in the 70s, he came back and worked as a cadet service aide. He has been retired from that position for probably 15 years now. Passed away from lung cancer, so was a very good guy, and we're going to miss him, so we'll have a resolution for the council's approval at the next meeting. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks for bringing that forward. Jenny, anything from HR this evening?
Good evening, mayor and council. I just wanted to bring to you some really impressive stats based on our clinic utilization for the last two weeks. So as you know, and we thank you all who attended our ribbon-cutting last weekend, Wednesday, our My Life Health and Wellness Center opened on the 12th of January. And as of this morning, not including today's stats, we have seen a total of 95 patients in the six days, six part-time days that we have been open. We've dispensed 43 medications out of our dispensary, and we are getting absolutely amazing feedback from staff all, for all three cities. So we are taking a look at some things that have come up already in discussions in terms of adding medications, modifying our formulary, looking at different hours already. We've had some conversations take place with other communities who are making genuine, having genuine interest in potentially joining our group, and some additional presentations about our program, and contacts from other communities inquiring about our clinic as well. So we're really excited about that. We're going to continue to monitor all the data that we have available to us, and we will be bringing that back to you in the future as we get a better handle on what that looks like, so.
May I ask a clarification question? Modify the formulary through the benefit plan, or modify the kinds of drugs the clinic's storing?
Correct. Yep, yep, the, yeah. So we've already identified some trends in terms of some medications, you know, and there'll be different peaks and valleys in terms of, during times of when people are really sick, antibiotics, things of that nature. So we're kind of taking a look at some of that based upon our utilization to make any changes if necessary.
Those 96 patients, are they all three cities or just Ferndale?
Yep, so that would be a mix of all three cities. And that could be either employees or dependents that are also on our healthcare plan, or in the, on the other community's healthcare plan as well. So we have, I don't believe we've had a day where just about every single appointment has been taken. I know I looked at the calendar today, and every single one was taken, so...
That's great.
We're getting our, our usage. Thank you.
Yes, excellent. All right. Derek, anything else from economic development today?
Seven minutes.
All right. Jill, anything else from recreation?
Just two quick announcements. I'd like to invite folks out on Wednesday, this coming Wednesday, at 5:00. The Kulik Center is a site for the Ferndale Blues and Music Festival. The Coolidge and Kennedy 6th Grade Choir will be putting on a concert. So it'll be 5:00 at the Kulik Center, roughly 45 minutes long. Second announcement is, starting on Tuesday, February 3rd, running through April 14th, we will be a site for AARP Free Tax Aid, and that will be open every Tuesday, doors open at 9:30, and they'll take the first, roughly 15 to 20 people that, that are in line, and that'll run through April. More information on tax aid is available at www.aarp.org slash...
Tax? No.
It's on the city website, Ferndale, not my stuff.
It's 10 after 10, we understand.
Chief Sullivan, anything from the fire department this evening? All right. Lloyd, anything else from DPW this evening?
Yes, I just wanted to let council know that the traffic signal that was downed and Marshall should be up and running within the week.
Oh, that's fantastic.
So we're waiting for Detroit Edison to do some final work, but that's actually at least three or four months, you know, quicker than the normal process, and that's just because of the expedited path that we took, and also the, the benefit of having insurance companies pay for the work. So at least they've, they've initially said they will, so.
Gotcha. Thanks, Floyd. Marty, anything from the city clerk's office?
No, nothing tonight.
All right. Joe, anything from the city manager's office?
Yes, just one item.
At least one introduction, I know.
Yes, we are happy to introduce Kara Sokol as the Director of Community Engagement for the city of Ferndale. Kara is going to be responsible for helping us design and craft our communications plan and, and help us improve how we improve our communications with residents and other businesses and stakeholders, and, and better yet, how we measure our performance in doing so. I'd like you just to introduce Kara Sokol.
Hello, nice to meet you all. I just wanted to let you all know how excited I am to be here in the city of Ferndale and also in this position. I'm very grateful. I'm just, you know, on my second week, the first day of my second week, so I'm still learning the ropes. I'm in kind of a research and discovery phase, trying to see what our needs are and how I can help to address those. I've kind of jumped into our social media accounts, and I'm getting a feel for The Voice and the, the content management and all that kind of good stuff. I will say that in the coming weeks and months, I'm really looking forward to working with Joe and the team to build some communication plans for the city and for our projects, as well as to find the best methods for communicating with the residents here, so.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Glad to have you all.
Very happy to have you.
Happy to be here.
Are you a friend on the Ferndale Forum Facebook yet?
Okay, yes. As of yesterday, I took the many suggestions, and I joined that, that group, and it is about, I've been in social media management for almost five...
about, I've been in social media management for almost five years, and it's the most active Facebook community I've ever seen in my entire life. It is, it's fascinating.
This is a slow week, too.
That's scary.
You're welcome. We're happy to have you here, and we look forward to all your good work.
Thank you so much.
Thanks. Anything else, Joe?
I have to tell you.
All right. Dan, anything else?
Just one item. There were some amendments to the state's Freedom of Information Act, and I will be bringing some suggested revisions to the city's Freedom of Information Act resolution for, for changes with respect to the city's responses to those items.
Good, thank you. Councilman Lennon?
Blues Fest is this week, Dean mentioned it, but I want to encourage folks to go. The, the two charities are very local and very worthy, and the ribs are just outstanding on Saturday. So you've got to show up and take part in that. That runs from noon to 6:00 on Saturday, but I believe there's music around town. That's nine days, 40 venues, if you can consider that much stuff going on. I know Jeannie talked about the art in the hallway, but I want to acknowledge the artist. Callie Blake is the artist who did that work, and she's a local resident, as well as works in Ferndale, and so I'd encourage people to come take a look. It's a nice new event from the Arts Commission. Speaking of the Arts Commission, on February 7th, there's that ACT-a-thon at Kulik Center that runs from 9:00 to 5:00-ish, I think, that is local folks do a variety of different acts, improvs. I understand there's a song and dance. I'm participating in it, I don't know about the dance part, but there's a, a large number of local folks engaged in that, and that's also a fundraiser for the Arts Commission. And lastly, on Tuesday, February 3rd, there's a meeting of the Ferndale Democratic Club at 6:30 at the Kulik Center. So if you're looking to get engaged, I encourage you to attend.
Hey. Councilman Lennon?
Dan stole my thunder on the Blues Fest. Dean, what time does the Ribten open?
Noon.
Noon? Okay, well, then, I really don't have anything, but I'll talk about parking in a little bit if you like.
Appreciate if you didn't.
Okay.
All right. Councilman Polika?
Three things. First one, I'm going to screw up, hoping that Derek will come up and correct me. On Wednesday, from 5:30 to 7:30, there will be a meeting at the library to talk about the Hilton Road project. And this is not really a meeting meeting, it's kind of an open forum. I believe at 6:00 o'clock, they're going to kind of have a formal conversation quickly to talk about the project, but really it is an idea, it's an opportunity for anyone interested in knowing about the project to come and learn about the specifics, where certain things are going to be done, how narrow the road's going to be, some illustrations of how beautiful it's going to look when it's done, and Derek's up here to correct any errors I may have.
I stood up for absolutely no reason. I think you hit the nail on that.
Is that 5:30 to 7:30?
5:30 to 7:30.
Thank you.
I'm encouraging people to go, especially my Parks and Rec group, because we want to make sure that the parking along Wilson Park isn't removed with the narrowing of the road, because if we're going to put a dog park, a lot of people are going to want to drive right down Hilton Road, park on the street there, and walk right to the park. Next thing is, it was slightly mentioned during the presentation, but I'm, I'm kind of bummed about the DNR grants that we submitted that were rejected last year. Jill and Lloyd put in a lot of work, Jill put in a lot of work. And the, we missed it by really that much, we missed it by 10 points. And the interesting thing is, is that last year, if you looked at it, ours would have easily gotten in and accepted. But they had about $1,000 left over. Once they hit the, I think it was 880 mark, 880 points, or was it 7, 8, 380, 380 mark? We came in at 370. Once they hit the 380 mark, they had about $100,000 left over, and what they did was they went down the list and found two $50,000 projects that were scored less and gave the money to them. So I, I, we really should have gotten some, something, but that's, that's how the state goes. And the third item is, as a member of the ordinance committee, I've had a conversation with Dan about ordinance section 12-114, which is the operation of model airplanes. And the reason I, I wanted him to look at that is drones. I don't know if drones would fall under that ordinance, or if we would have to have a new ordinance, but he and I had a conversation about two weeks ago, and over the weekend there was an incident with a drone on the White House lawn.
Oh, the White House, yeah.
The White House, yeah. So I, I think it's something that we really have to look into, because they're becoming more popular, and you can, you can operate them by, by programming them. You don't even have to give it a signal, you just have to program it, and you can go wherever you want it to go. So you have absolutely no idea who's controlling it. So, that's all I have.
Would we have to purchase a drone to patrol the drones?
Drone patrol.
I don't think you hear me.
I've seen people post their images.
I said, would we have to purchase a drone to patrol the drones?
Councilwoman Piana?
Yeah, just a couple. I received communications from a doctor who lives in Farmington Hills, and they are promoting Farmington Safe, which is suicide awareness for everyone, and they're hosting a speaker from suicide attempt survivor Jordan Burnham on January 27th, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. And it's also up on the Oakland County 115 for more information. But I thought it was important, not only the topic, but it's not very often I have another city asking me to cross-promote their events. And I think it's important that we can do that when we get those communications, and be more thoughtful about it when it actually benefits our residents. And I think suicide awareness is a very important topic, and I encourage people to attend. The other one I wanted to talk about is just something I put out on the Ferndale Forum today and on my own blog, is a, a useful tool that I have found that can help people understand the development review process, and it's from Smart Growth America, and it's community, oh boy, hang on, I don't even remember the name of it. It is choosing our community's future, and it's a citizen's guide to getting the most out of new development. And it really talks about how citizens can weigh whether a project is a good development or not so good development with their community in relationship to their master plan. And it goes over some very technical planning terms that I think will become very prevalent in the next couple of weeks. And so I just wanted to let people know that smartgrowthamerica.org, or you can go to my blog, meltropolis, meltropolis.com. And then I just wanted to give a brief update, that today was my first meeting for the RTA Citizens Advisory Committee, and I'm very excited to represent Ferndale and Oakland County as this group looks to help guide the RTA's regional master plan process for transit. And they're creating a transit master plan, and we'll be looking at how do we connect all our modes together. I'm really excited to, to move that along. That's it.
Excellent. You've covered all of the things I was going to say except for one, and I just want to let our residents know that there was the first case of measles in Oakland County recently, the first case in years, actually. There's a growing population of, of parents who are not having their kids vaccinated. I think all the science is clear that that's a bad idea, and you should have your kids vaccinated. You can get vaccinations at the Oakland County Health Department in Pontiac, or at their office in Southfield, and I would strongly encourage all of our parents to have their children vaccinated from measles and the other childhood illnesses that are easily prevented from vaccination. So I just want to remind folks of the importance of that. With that, our meeting is adjourned.